Hi, everybody, and welcome to the Planning Board here, meeting of November 28, 2012. Tonight, we have Matilda Evangelista, Mr. Christopher Rich, myself, I'm Harry Lockatilia. We have Howard Snyder as our town planner. Wendy Beaumont taking minutes for us this evening. Without any further ado.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rich.
I would move that we approve the minutes of November 14, 2012, subject to any changes of my editorial, or edits of my colleagues.
Approving the minutes of November 14th, is there a second?
Second.
Tilly, seconds, discussion.
Copies of revised minutes are handed out in the supplemental packet.
With all the submitted changes.
So I'm looking at the wrong thing. I just, you know, I have a question about the content. The first section, unless they were all seen. How many motions do, did we make for this simple, for this simple site approval?
Is site approval for the public hearing at 38 is made?
The first section there, yeah.
Close the public comments.
Looks like four, four motions.
Close the hearing.
Did we do that? To do the same thing.
We closed the public comments, then we had our board discussion.
No, this was the Bank of America, right?
Yeah, we're on page two of 16.
Yeah.
Looks like we...
You closed?
Motion is second to close public comment. Public comment was closed. Then Chris made a motion to close the public hearing and approve the decision. And...
All right, let's...
Motion to approve the decision. Yeah, so we had a motion to close the public hearing. That was seconded, carried. And then we had a motion to approve the decision for the site plan approval.
Check and see if we changed anything.
That was seconded and approved. Let the record show that...
Checking to see if we changed anything.
Mr. Watts.
Hello.
Oh, you, Mr. Watts. Quite well, thank you. Watts arrives at...
I'll go, I'll go.
7:10.
Charlie on the MTA arrives at 7:10.
Yeah, there you go. Does that work for you too?
We have a...
Bob, just so you know, we're discussing the minutes of November 14, 2012, and they're in your supplemental package, amended.
We, you closed it for the audience, the public hearing.
Right, that's in line 42.
Then you, then you did a motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Rich, and I seconded it.
Yep.
And then...
Line 69.
And then if you move along, you do it again. Motion to close the public hearing.
Well, the...
And then Mr. Watts seconded it.
No, 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 no. Here's what you've seen here. In line 54, the motion to close the hearing, okay? And then it was seconded. But we never voted on it, we had the discussion of it.
Right.
See, right there in line 65, discussion?
So what you should have had was a vote.
In 67, it was repeated.
Why?
Well, just to... Move along.
That's the order that it happened.
Then Mr. Watts seconded it.
You don't have to repeat it, okay?
Yeah, just repeat it, that's all. Yep, it was a little bit there. And then after that, Chris made a motion to the site plan approval with all the amended decisions. And that carried, right?
Yeah.
And if you want to change that, you can change it.
No, that's, it doesn't, it's not that...
Is it confusing?
It's not that relevant, it's just that I understand that it's new to you to do a special permit, but it's not necessary to do all that.
This is a hint.
No, I'm just, I'm just kind of...
I didn't want, no.
Do you guys expect me to clean up afterwards?
Anything else that we see in the minutes that we'd like to clean up? Looks like all the changes I saw are made.
Your changes.
Whatever the page, you can fix the telephone number for ADA and use the numeral two instead of the word two for 352.
Yeah, you can. On the front, of all the pages? Yep. Contact the ADA coordinator at 978-352...
2.
T W O.
No, not a mine, it doesn't say that.
It says that on one...
Says T W on yours?
Yeah.
Each page.
On the footing.
For some reason, that was an editing mistake, but if you look on the agenda, it's correct, so.
Yeah. Why is it printed on each paper?
It's a footnote.
Each page has a footnote.
Yeah, it's a footnote, yeah.
It's on the, on the page as a footnote, which goes on everything. I know, the course would be sufficient.
Yeah. The only change I thought I had was...
That's a three, one of those cognitive deficits.
On page nine.
Page nine?
This is on page nine.
Oh.
Oh, we're, Mr. Merrill, I think that was Jim Demento came up with that.
Wendy went back at the tape and reviewed it.
Okay, so that's corrected already?
Are we talking about seven of 16?
Uh...
Page seven, or what line are we looking at?
Nine, I believe, so, 316, number 316.
Mr. Merrill, previous plan to say this, I'm sure. Okay. And you thought that was Jim Demento, or?
Yeah, that's, I, he came up with that.
I think it was proven to them adequately at the site walk that the speed limit that they originally requested was a tad excessive. I agree.
At any rate, we'll discuss that at the next...
Did you want me to change page nine?
No, that's, this one right here.
Did, you review the tape?
I, I, yeah, word by word.
Is it matter, is that it?
No. No, but I just, it might matter to you, no.
Doesn't matter to me.
Anybody see anything else?
No.
So, motion approved minutes of November 14, 2012, seconded by Tilly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Four to zero.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, correct. I would move that we, subject to any comments, endorse by my changes, if I can find the vouchers.
Yeah, well, sure.
That we approve the vouchers as submitted in the amount of...
Were there any changes from the draft?
Your, your comments were done on this, vouchers to be signed, correct?
Oh, no, I mean...
The changes that you had suggested.
The amount stayed the same, though?
Yes.
No additional ones?
Do we have a copy of it?
Yeah. Oh, here we go. Wow, there's no total.
133487.
Thirteen, thirty-four, and eighty-seven cents? Chris moves to approve the vouchers totaling...
1,334 and 47.
And forty-seven?
1,800?
1,334 and 47 cents?
Forty-seven cents.
I have 34.87.
I said eighty-seven cents.
Okay.
You know the town accountant will not sleep at night with forty cents off.
We don't.
Especially when we're talking 48 gazillion dollars for school.
Just a quick total, looks like it's going to be 87, Howard, just running those numbers in my head. Should be 87.
It starts at 87 at the top, and there are all zeros in between.
Yeah, so. Sure looks like it.
Hey, you want mine or pull that?
And then the warrant payable? Well, Chris made a motion to approve the warrant in the amount of $1,334.87. Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Watts. And since that's the larger of the two amounts, I'm going to follow it. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Four to zero, that's unanimous.
Do you want to change yours, because I made a circle.
There's nothing to change, except on the warrant, maybe.
Oh.
What you sign. You have to look at those numbers and make sure those numbers are right. This is just a total. Those are all going to be called out separately on the warrants. Right? And the total will be...
Oh, the...
Who's the warrant payer?
The warrant, it's on here.
Here it is. What's that?
1250.
Yeah, that's 1250, that's why. See, that's going to be right. That's right, now there's got to be another bills payable. Oop. And what's that total went out to? That's wrong.
That's right.
That's wrong.
WB Mason is for 4890, and Schwab is for 3597.
So it's flipped, it's flipped in what we got?
That's what, this is wrong.
The, the amended packet that is on your desk right there...
Okay.
Oh.
Has...
Yeah, I think we were looking at... I think we were looking at...
We were looking at the one that was, that came out originally.
Right, the original one that was sent out is in correct.
Okay.
Oh, I don't have anything else in here.
Can somebody show me where this is?
Yeah, I don't think I have that.
Is it not in there?
I've got minutes.
That one's correct, the two he has.
I got minutes.
He's got the, the original, yeah.
No, these are all minutes.
What I pulled up, was he correct?
Um, this has been modified, unbroken.
By how much?
Forty cents, I think.
Eighty-seven, forty cents.
By forty cents?
Correct.
And how much money we just spent on forty cents?
Keep that paper moving.
Just keep it moving.
Right on down.
Let's go.
Just curious, how about not to exceed?
Yeah. All right, it's less than.
No.
Less than, good enough.
You did it right, eighty-seven cents.
Why don't we take care of the old business right now? Let's handle Bank of America, start right off with that one. How's that sound?
Are you going to Bank, you're not doing the public hearings?
No.
First, okay, Bank of America.
We just have to sign a plan, right?
Is that okay?
We need to sign...
Decision signed, and MyLars. I'm going to be out of the way with that, right? Is there anything, are there any representatives, or?
Nope.
Nobody's here? Just sign them?
Yep.
Who wants to start?
Why don't we just pass this?
Yeah, just, where's the decision, Howard, we can start that.
What do you say?
Would it make things faster if I brought them in?
The decision, Tilly?
Decision has been revised to reflect the requested two lines to be changed at the last meeting.
Great. The, the two changes were to, remember, there was a revision about the wording, how Larry Graham will actually end up reviewing, and being there.
All right, so how was that changed? What was that with that?
Well, some wording is added, you can look at it.
Where's it?
Howard's going to give us the, oh, the decision's right over there.
Oh.
And, we want to sign the, the MyLars over there, Howard?
MyLars in, in the paper.
What paper?
Bob, you want to start that off? Enjoy.
And the decision?
Two signatures.
In their two plans to handle it. Two lines. One, two, three. Date it, the name, and then do that for each of the paper sheets, and each of them take a seat.
Leave the stamp. Leave the stamp. Who are we signing? Five MyLars?
Or do you have them?
Is it the 28th?
Yes, it is.
That's what we're saying.
Five.
There's only meant to be C1 through C5, correct?
I think there are eight of them, seven of them, or eight.
No, you only have to sign C1.
Yeah, the hell's you feel like signing, go for it. She's in the mood.
That is silent.
Why? Why are there two signature pages here, Chris?
The last page, there's one dated November 14, and there's one dated to today's date. And I didn't know if the board wanted to sign it because it was approved on the 14th.
Yeah, I get you, I understand what you're saying.
So, it's one or the other.
Yeah, I get you, I get you.
The front page states, the hearing that it was approved.
Right, stated that it was voted at that meeting.
Right.
And this is the final approval. Gotcha, very clear, good. Good.
Well, not to confuse the people, two people that I signed at 11:28.
It'll be all right.
Unlike that other board that signs them prospectively.
Easy. Enough. Okay, we have, okay, let's, let's, before we go to hearings while we're signing and everything, I don't want anybody distracted, but maybe we could deal with bounds. And Harmony Lanes first. Anybody here from Harmony Lane? That was Dave Varga, right?
Yeah.
That would be Varga. Is Dave showing up tonight?
No, I don't, we don't.
Okay.
To just provide some more information.
Let's go to, let's go to Stone Row then. And Tim, why don't you come on up and share, share up there with...
A little slack.
Try to squeeze in there, buddy, please. Usually what we do is we, we sign the MyLars over there, so. Next time, can, can, can we have that guy sit in the back of the room? He's taking up the table. Good, give him the MyLars, let him sign. Tim.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh. Issue of bounds. Yeah, Harmony, Stone. Howard, you want to, you want to give us a synopsis, please, of where we are?
Provided in your packet, I included emails from Tim, who sent me some additional information on the bounds. He included a copy of the filed cover sheet, certificate of vote. And I'm going to get up on the screen. There was the certificate of vote for special permit with conditions for the common drive. So you've had a chance to review that. And I'm going to scroll to some images that Tim sent on that was included with the board, images of the two locations where it was being requested that some bounds be put in. And I believe Tim just has more information and up to date about what's been going on with placing those meets and bounds.
Yeah, so it's really come down to two bounds that are property line bounds. One of them already has a steel pipe bound there.
Rebound pin?
Eleven-two bound, that's, that's your standard acceptable under 365-62 in the code as a property bound. So it's already there. I think David and Howard just want to make sure you guys leave it, not a granite, but it's not required, your requirements are a bound. And so, lot 13 to lot, lot 13 Stone Row to lot 1 Stone Row extension already has a bound there, but it's an iron pipe bound, which appears to be acceptable to me based on the pound code. That's the one, furthest one down where it says lot line, that one right there, yep. And so, I'm asking you to just provide direction to Howard and to David that I don't need to dig up that iron pipe and replace it with a granite bound, because the iron pipe appears to be, based on your code, acceptable bound.
Now, Tim, with, with respect to what you say, it could have been acceptable if it was waived during the original permit. But, reading back, I find that in those minutes, that was specifically excluded from the vote the night the waivers were voted. And, Howard, you can probably find the minutes. The bottom line is, were provided.
The, the minutes, the minutes were provided. I'm not understanding, can you repeat that one more time, Harry?
On the, on the title page?
On the title page.
On the title page.
Yep.
A list of 11, I think it were 11 waivers that were requested.
Yeah, sure.
On the night of the vote, when it was taken.
Okay.
One of those, I think Hugh Carter made the motion. The 11th condition was accepted from that, was taken out.
Okay.
As approved, so that was not, that was not waived.
Okay.
Okay. The bottom line is, at this point, to my knowledge, as far as I can see, from what everything, none of these are waived.
Which is fine.
Right.
Okay, and so, so it's not waived, okay, and so it's there. I mean, I don't need anything on the lot 13 to lot 1 as a waiver. There's already an iron pipe that is the bound that I read 365-62, which says what are acceptable bounds? It's granite, concrete, or iron pipe.
Maybe we could pull that up, and I think the way it's reading is...
Is there any indication why, in, why he, that was excluded?
Yes, because it's boundary line.
Because it's boundary line.
It's street bounds.
So it's tacitly saying that, that that's accurate, right?
That, that was, those were where they wanted to be.
Yeah.
From my perspective, I voted on it, and at this point in time, the three on the right, they really are not of great consequence.
Uh-huh.
In my opinion, because the owners of these three lots own that street, own that portion of the roadway. They all own a third of it.
That's correct.
So from that perspective, that really means nothing to me. As, as a member of the planning board, in 20, 30 years, in five or six flips of all these properties, will this landowner know where that landowner's property line is? I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Same thing up in the top.
Right.
So from my perspective, the two larger ones that are showing the property, those are the only two I personally care about. I'm not speaking for the board, the board might want all five of them, I don't know. But from my perspective, those two are the only ones that really tack a punch.
Well, those are the only two not in, right?
Right.
Well, the iron pipe's in, so if we could bring that up, because I sent you that, the actual...
The image?
Copy of your, in my email, I sent the copy of your...
A photograph?
Of your, the copy of the lot code.
And when they talk about the benchmarks and bounty, property bounds, they're talking about, there should be a marker.
Granite shall extend at least five feet into the ground. Lot shall be bonded on each corner by a property bound.
Yep.
Bound will not protrude more than six inches above the ground.
Go on.
Lot boundary markers will be the granite or concrete at least six inches square and four inches, four feet long, or iron pipe at least one and a half inches in diameter and four feet long.
Right.
Certificate from a registered professional engineer, a registered landsaver, surveyor, stating that he has set such bounds in compliance with the regulations shall be filed with the board, such marks shall not be installed until all construction work, which would disturb or destroy the bond. Bound is completed. When the street bounds, and I don't know where I have it here.
Can I see that, Tim?
Is there a copy of that email I sent you, where I violated all of it?
It's going to be in the back, because it's the most recent, so all the emails are sorted chronologically.
And it's, it's a little bit confusing, because what happened was... More minutes, more minutes.
No?
Why did they initially request to waive that?
I bought the project afterwards, as you know.
I wasn't there in the beginning either, in Stone Row. Why would anybody want to waive it in the first place, it's beyond me.
That carries, right? Probably to save a little money.
Yeah, just, yeah, to save the money.
But that's, that doesn't save the property owner.
Yeah, Carter moves to approve the definitive subdivision as submitted, subject to granting the waivers noted on the plan, except number 11. And that's what passed. And the idea here is that there's a little bit of confusion between what's called 365-62B and 365-32C7. The confusion is understandable. 32C7?
32 seconds.
Yeah.
In any event, it would never be brought to us because, only because of the wiring.
Yeah, that's the problem.
That's the problem.
The problem is, you know, around that iron bound, is I hit the electric tape saying, utility's buried underground right here.
Well, can't they be moved?
Well, actually, maybe we don't want to go to the...
Anything can be moved.
Howard did bring up, Howard did have a couple ideas, I don't know where they actually originated, from Dave Varga, or from you, from Howard, from somewhere. But, one is to do an offset bound.
Yeah.
And record that in the, on the Asbell plan.
Fine. That makes more sense.
Or encase a shorter bound in concrete in the right location.
Okay.
I'm leaning in that direction, because, again, in 20 years, when two neighbors might want to know where to put a fence, or something like that, it'll be easy for them, they won't have to get an $8,000 survey done.
Sure.
Right, that's where the money comes in.
Yeah, so I don't have any problem putting a shorter bound in the top one, okay, because it's 32 inches deep by the time I get that conduit in the flange, okay? But let's talk about the iron bound again.
So now you're talking about...
There's not a lot of room.
The lower one?
The lower one.
So, just so I can, we can correctly...
Identify them?
Get this noted.
Yeah.
We're talking about...
The one where the arrow is right now.
Between map 17, what, what is that, 86T?
No, should be between, which one do you want to talk about?
We're up at the top one, where there's the short bound.
That's lot 14 to lot 2.
Three? Oh, is that two?
That's two.
That was two?
Yep.
And, and just in the context, is the planning board entertaining that this bound be installed in this condition? So it should be a vote, right, to approve as an acceptable?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So I would...
Can we have a, can I have a motion, please?
For an offset bound?
No, for a shortened one.
Oh, so moved.
Mr. Rich moves to install a shortened bound.
The bound length being three feet, right, that's the most you could do?
It could not be. I, I hit it at, it was like 29 inches or so.
A shortened bound.
Thank you, sir.
In concrete?
In concrete.
So as not to disturb the underground utilities?
So as not to disturb the underground utilities.
That'd be perfect, thank you.
And if I can make a recommendation, if...
Just, just for specificity, specificity. And that is between lots 14? And Tim, you said that's lot number three?
Yeah, lot number two.
Lot number two, excuse me.
Sorry, I'm sorry, that's two.
And lot two.
Yep.
Okay, just so we know. So, a shortened bound in concrete, deep as it has to be, so it, and six inches out of the ground, as it's called.
No greater than six inches.
No greater than six inches of reveal.
I think you still should call the electric department to make sure.
Make sure what?
Whenever, when you're putting this in, that it's not going to be in any more way.
And Tim, you said that's lot number three?
Yeah, lot number two.
Lot number two, excuse me.
Sorry, I'm sorry, that's two.
Lot two.
Yep.
Okay, just so we know. So, a shortened bound in concrete, deep as it has to be, so it, and six inches out of the ground, as it's called.
No greater than six inches.
No greater than six inches reveal.
I think you still should call the electric department to make sure.
Make sure what?
Whenever, when you're putting this in, that it's not gonna be in any more way.
How close is it to the box?
Isn't that things that you have to do?
It might, it might be, just a, not a bad idea.
If you prefer, if you prefer an offset, gentlemen, or if you wanna do an offset.
Excellent, um, whoever digs the hole is required by law to call big safety.
You're not gonna hit it. It'll be, it'll be easy enough.
I've already gone down there thirty inches, you know, we're not gonna go down thirty more.
Uh, between lot fourteen and lot two. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, Tim, Tim seconds. I think that's a nice solution for that one, remember we still have a second one to do. All in favor, I'm gonna call it, Tilly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman.
What is it? Yes, Mr. Rich?
It appears that three sixty-five thirty-five C-
Seven?
Thirty-seven.
Okay, now, now you're running into the other problem. The other problem is, this was pre, this was, the, the regulations were being cited on a version of the regulations that was put together by a planner of yours. Ms. Buck did a, an in-house version of the regulations, and she got all of the numbers off by one. When they were corrected by the next planner.
By one?
Yes.
Then they, then, then they became-
Was she one ahead or one short?
I don't remember. Tony?
Kelly Short.
I would suggest it's three sixty-five thirty-four C seven.
You know, I mean, that's, you drive yourself insane.
Standard highway bound shall be shown at all intersections of streets with each other, at all points of change in direction of curvature of streets, and at all outer plan boundaries, see three sixty-five section sixty-two.
Thank you. Tim, could you, could you explain what's going on with that, the, the one between, what is it, lot thirteen and lot one?
Sure, same thing, there, there is a underground utility that was in existence prior to my starting the project, that has a eleven-two iron pipe already installed.
Is this the correct image for it?
That is the correct image, and, and you can see the pipe, it's a little difficult, it's in the shade there, but, right there, and you can see the utility tape where I've hit, in yellow caution tape that many utility companies use to mark when they start where underground utilities are located. So, that tape was hit about a foot down or so, that bound is there, according to my surveyor, that bound is probably-
You don't have to worry, because that's not the right underground barrel tape. It's actually just caution tape, somebody just must have thrown in the hole.
It actually says electric, though. It's not just standard caution tape, it says electrical.
Is that where the Conservation Commissioner's house is?
Yes.
Yes.
Let him dig it up.
So, according-
How far down would you say that is?
So, that's about a foot down.
About a foot down?
Yeah.
Maybe this is the place where we do an offset?
Well, can I ask you again? I, I'm confused about your regulation, which says that a bound can be granite, concrete, or iron pipe, and the iron pipe's already there, it's been there a hundred years.
Is that an inch and a half iron pipe?
It is. No, it's eleven-two, yes, inch and a half. So I'm confused about why you're asking me to do anything.
That's, was, that wasn't waived.
It's not waived, but what, what Tim is saying, where did I-
It meets the requirement.
Yeah.
That wasn't my understanding.
Each lot shall be bounded on each corner of the property bound. Bound will not protrude more than six inches above the ground. Lot boundary markers will either be granite or concrete, at least six inches square and four feet long, or iron pipe at least one and a half inches in diameter and four feet long. So you only have to have one of the three.
Mm-hmm.
To be in compliance.
So that the pipe itself is in, the pipe-
The inch and a half pipe, iron pipe, is in compliance.
Um, is the top of the pipe level with the ground?
Yes.
So, can, so you see it without excavating? Would, would you have been able to?
It, just looking on the image, it looks like the, the top has been rolled over from mowing and-
Hammered on.
That's the trouble with these pipes, it's the mowing. You hit that with your-
No one's gonna be mowing that, Tilly, it's, it's right next to the, uh-
In this photograph-
Is that in the garden area of where, uh-
It is.
Poliony's house is?
It is.
In this photograph, there's a-
His driveway exceeds his property bounds?
No, no, the shared driveway, that's all shared driveway in front.
The street's a shared driveway, right?
The street, well, it's not a street, it's a shared driveway, right?
What appears to be the pavement that goes to all the lots.
Yes.
I'm just, I hope he's watching, that's all. Nothing should blow up in the bud.
Right.
If, I could just offer a suggestion about this.
It sounds like, Mr. Chairman, it, it looks like it's in complaints, we might not like it, but-
If, if, if Tim would be willing, and, I'm suggesting this, let me know what you think, if he were to have a licensed surveyor come out and confirm the location of that pipe properly, knows the location-
It already is.
It has to be.
It's already been done.
There's a certificate from a registered professional engineer.
It hasn't migrated at all, that it's still accurate?
Four-foot pipes don't migrate, if they do, we're all in serious trouble.
I don't have any problem with-
A lot of things have gone on, so.
Howard, I don't have any problem with certifying that, he's, he's already been out there multiple times.
In the, in the, in the photograph, there's a-
Do you have the certification that it's four feet long?
I do not, so I can't certify the length of it, because it was there already.
You're supposed to produce it anyhow, according to this.
I understand.
So if you could talk to your engineer and get the certificate of-
But let's, let's-
Let's hear what Bob has to say, or let's something to say.
In the photograph that was provided us, there's, this photograph, down, if you scroll down, there's a, a box, and I'm wondering what that box is.
That's the electrical underground.
That's the, that's utility box, utilities box.
Now, I got one, I'll give one to one either.
How, how far would you say this protrudes out of the ground?
It doesn't.
It doesn't?
It's level.
It's level.
Your requirement is no greater than six inches, it doesn't say it couldn't be deeper.
Right, but deeper buried underground kind of obviates the utility of having a boundary.
Your code says-
Well, no, no, I, I understand, what, what I'm wondering is, maybe if that could be capped, just so it would protrude a little bit.
Yeah.
I, I, I think there's-
Is that too jury-rigged a solution?
I, I think so, I, I think what we're missing here is that the request was made to waive that requirement, and that requirement wasn't waived. And when it was done so, and I don't know if you recall it or not, I remember you were on the board at the time, I forget who else, Tilly, I don't know if you were on the board, the idea was that the, the bounds would be placed in, and now we seem to have a little bit of a misunderstanding as to what constitutes a bound.
And I would have no problems digging it up and putting in a granite bound, but unfortunately, I've hit the underground utilities.
Right, right. You're in a quandary, yeah.
I hit that tape after eight to twelve inches.
I, I think this is an excellent place for, for one-
Eight to twelve inches where the tape is, I stopped digging once, it said underground utilities right here.
This is an offset post, and then a recordation of that certified by, by the surveyor on the Asbeld.
Down, is where I hit the yellow caution tape saying underground utilities.
And I'm sure the utilities are much further than that.
Yeah, I'm sure they are.
I'm sure they're a minimum thirty-six.
Were you at the bottom of the pipe at that point?
Only eight inches down, that pipe goes down from-
He said it was eight to twelve inches down.
Oh, that's inch and a half pipe?
Yeah, I stopped digging. It's, it's twelve inches from the utility.
Okay.
From that box.
Yeah.
Okay, and I dug around eight to twelve inches before I hit the yellow tape saying caution, underground utilities.
So if he put an offset granite bound in, and then referred to where that pipe was, and the pipe stays there.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. What's wrong with that?
Yeah, I don't wanna disturb that pipe.
I have no problem with that.
Put the offset bound in, so that-
Then what's wrong with it?
The offset bound will stick up high enough that it'll be clearly visible, and everybody's plan of their land is to show that that's an offset bound.
And, and it'd be shown on the Asbeld.
Sure. Is there a-
Howard, could you give me a favor, could you pull up the, the, that little sketch we had showing the bounds and the lines?
This one?
Yeah. Tim, no, we're not referring to that one, we're referring to the other one, right?
Right.
Tim, uh, without being able to zoom in on that circle, would you say that the box is right along that property line?
Yes.
The lines are? You think the underground utilities are running along the property line?
That is to say, is this box on the property line? I mean, it, it looks from the size of it and how close it is, it almost has to be.
Well, I can't tell you where, I can't tell which direction you were seeing.
I don't know which direction it goes from there, Harry, you know, that's coming off of Stone Row Lane, I'm guessing.
You were facing northish.
And then, however the utility company moved it to Mr. Poliony's house, I can't tell you how they did that.
I'm, you, you can probably guess, because you can see the shadows, the shadows going, going this way.
There is another box, that was the existing box, then for Mr. Poliony's property, there's a box maybe ten feet down or so, running parallel with that, with the, with the road.
The water service?
Uh, it runs right with the water service as well, yep, so I'm assuming that, that utility goes in that direction, if that's what you're asking.
Well, my, my question is, where do we would place this?
Yeah, isn't there, isn't there a box somewhere, if that's the corner, this is his driveway?
Uh, driveway's further down.
No, Poliony's driveway.
Yeah, it's, it's just a little bit further than where you're saying, yeah, because that, you're in the vegetated area that can't be-
Okay, so that, when you come in through the gate, Howard, I cannot reach that, I can't. I'd like to, but I'm vertically challenged.
You could really screw with him now.
This is where you're driving from Stone Row Lane, correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
The first box is here, there's another box somewhere down here, correct?
That's correct, not quite that far, but-
Yeah, maybe not, wherever his driveway is, I think it's just after his driveway.
Before his driveway.
It's before his driveway.
It is.
Okay.
What, what, does, does anyone think that, see the spot right here, where the intersection of the circle and the line is, the property line? Anybody think that's a good place to put it, right with, no, no, over here, not the red circle, Howard, a little red circle.
Put, put your finger where you're sitting.
Yeah, and drop, drop it down just a touch, there you go.
Right there, yeah.
Right at the intersection of the circle and that property line.
I think that would probably be-
If that spot had a, had a bound.
Sure.
And assuming there's nothing there prohibiting us from putting one in.
Right.
That way, as long as the offsets noted-
It's on the property line.
As long as the offsets noted on the Asbeld, doesn't matter we have put it.
Absolutely.
I like that, I like that, wherever it works for you.
Being on the property line would be nice.
Would be the ideal.
As long as the line's not running down.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you, you don't wanna move it this way and have the offset be in the middle of the other box, so, that would suck.
It wouldn't work.
Yeah.
Do we have an application for modification for an issue like this?
Uh, this is an insignificant, why, do you think this is a significant one?
Well, does it have to be registered? Does it have to go to the registry?
No, the, the Asbelds can reflect it, this is a mod, if I ever saw a minor modification, this would be one, in my opinion.
If someone wanted to survey the land, what would they do, what, which one would they use?
You're recording the Asbelds?
They're gonna go to the, they're gonna have the plan to work from.
Can they record the ones already, we're already, I thought we were-
We haven't recorded Asbelds, they're not done yet, they're not, this is the final part of the-
Yeah, can, can it be, like, written on the, on the offset?
It'll be, it's noted right on the plan.
I mean, on the offset, physically, on the offset out in the woods, can it be writ, just written on there?
Need an application?
On the bound?
Yes, but the information where the people are gonna be looking at it, and it can refer to some other document or something.
I'm talking to granite bound.
Yeah?
Yeah, you're talking something about a hundred years, I mean, I, I, I got somebody with something like that.
If they're gonna survey this, I, I, I would be on the assumption they'd go to the registry and get current documentation about the properties, and they'd see the Asbelds there.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Does anybody have a motion on how to wrap all that up?
Besides leaving the iron pipe?
Mr. Rich, make it succinct, I know you can do it.
Well, that's my motion. Succinct enough?
Moves to set an offset bound-
An offset bound to the existing iron pipe bound.
To the existing IR bound.
Along the property line.
That runs on the property line.
Along the property line.
To be duly noted on the Asbeld as to its offset, which shall not exceed-
Built.
Its offset of those.
What do you think?
Noted on the Asbeld as such.
Should not be offset more than a foot.
Well, I think a couple, I think up to four feet.
Let's give them the flexibility and-
Yeah. That utility services thirteen Stone Row Lane, I'm not sure-
A reasonable distance.
A reasonable distance.
Along the property line, right, if possible. A reasonable distance along the property line.
That's thirteen's feet.
Yes. That's why it was existing, I, you know, I didn't have anything to do with it, that those electric boxes were there.
Yeah, okay.
How can we blame this on Poliony?
Yeah, we gotta be able to blame this on, on the landowner and, and this guy.
All right, well, we've got one more to talk about with him, if you don't mind.
What are those two lots, lot?
That is between lot thirteen and lot one.
Okay, so the motion two, let me see if I can read what I said, set an offset bound to, on the property line, uh, next to the, off of the existing IR bond, bound along the property line, to be noted on the Asbeld as such between lot thirteen and lot one. Is that good?
Yeah, that's great.
You know what we're talking about, right?
I do.
Is there a second for that?
Well, as long as David understands, so there's no confusion.
Second, Tim?
One more problem with the bound.
All in favor?
Sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously, great.
Could we leave that one up there, Howard, please?
What else is, what do you have?
The last one, there's three requirements for the road bounds, the first, the top two are in, no problems, that one right there, we, we hit ledge approximately twenty-two inches down.
What would you call that, how would you describe that, Bob?
I, I would call that the, the paper road, um, because it doesn't exist, you know, this is all to mark a paper road, this is the paper road, um, bound in front of lot one extension.
Why wasn't that moved down to the existing division of the lots?
Those are not property bounds, these are street bounds now.
But I don't see a property line down there.
There is, the property bound is there, right next to it, it's not circled, that is in, without any problem, right?
Yeah, this is, that was just the end of the radius before the break.
That one, Howard, right.
How far could you go down?
That's it?
I, I went down, I have a two-foot, four-by-four granite marking it right now, I can't go any further down than two feet.
I'll accept the motion to waive the paper road bound in front of lot one extension and the road extension.
Concrete or rubber?
I can, I, I don't like it, I'd rather pull it out from Mr. Poliony, it's in the middle of his front yard with, with-
It's in the middle of his front yard?
Well, not in the middle, but it's, it's six inches out of the ground, I mean, I, I was gonna tell him, we'd probably break it off.
Does anyone wanna make a motion to waive the-
So moved.
The paper road bound in front of lot one? And the road extension.
Cause I know Mr. Poliony was looking for a place to tether his Christmas snowman. Oops, he was, I hope his wife's not watching.
Mr. Watts, seconds, all in favor? Mr. Watts, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Was that an option?
Aye, yeah. But I do have a question. Why is?
Motion carries. Go ahead.
Will the planner see the total as-bills before it's registered?
Oh, absolutely.
Mr. Vargo will be.
Yeah, we have to, we have to receive them.
And then, how do we know that you registered those?
Provide a.
As-bills. You can come back with a.
I can send Howard a, a receipt.
Hey, just give us, if you give us a copy of the receipt, that notes the book and page.
Sure.
Your paid receipt will note them.
Probably wants all his account money back. I, I don't think he's gonna skip down.
I'll probably cut him back.
He knows where we live.
Be nice if we had a coffee.
Yeah.
You will have a coffee.
Anything else? One last question. Does this wrap it up? I mean, you install the two bounds, do whatever you have to with the, is this a wrap? Are we done?
It's done.
We're done.
Until he moves on to the next development. How's the singer, Mr. Watts?
She's great. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Sorry for the inconvenience with bounds.
Have a great holiday if we don't see you.
I do not like being in the. But I do like the output. If you've gone down, it's beautiful.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Rich.
I would suggest that we take out of order now the public hearing.
Hmm, no, we didn't finish that. The public hearing, what are you, what are we looking at? What are we looking for? Park and Rec, Amera? You wanna go with, okay, we can do a public hearing, Amera, eight o'clock, right?
He, and I might point out, he's the Republican representative-elect for those of us, for those of you Democrats on the board.
We will do our best not to hold that against you.
What are you, sweet love is it?
When you win fair and square, you win fair and square.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Thank you.
Not you, the Republican behind you.
Okay, where are we here, kids? And.
There's only three signatures here, sorry.
Just trying to pick up my Democratic colleague.
This should be, this should be, well, I, I don't care about the papers. I'm only concerned about the, the MyLars, right? Those are gonna be recorded.
Oh.
The papers don't mean anything because the MyLars should be copied and sent to us with our signatures on it.
Well, there's only two signatures here.
Actually, more than enough.
Need three.
Are you the third signature, Tilly?
Yep.
Good. Done. Uh, in accordance, and I'm gonna start, uh, this, this will be the, Wendy, this will be the opening of a public hearing, okay? Edit as such. Public hearing notice. In accordance provisions of section one sixty-five eighty-three of the town of Georgetown Code, the Georgetown Planning Board will hold a public hearing on November twenty-eighth at seven P M. In the third floor meeting room at Georgetown Memorial Town Hall, one Library Street, to consider America Company Incorporated and Ran Realty LLC's application for site plan approval regarding site development consisting of proposed building addition and associated site improvements for the purpose of fleet vehicle repair at Six Norino Way, uh, et al.
Et al.
Please. Et al. And we are gonna call this. What is the address that we're actually calling this? This is Six Norino?
Six Norino.
Calling it Six Norino?
Yeah.
That's a good way. Six Norino. And this is a site plan approval. And a public hearing is open. Sorry about that. We, we would usually give you the, the whole thing. As a matter of fact, Tilly, you know what? You can wrap that all up and throw it on the cart so these folks can have some real estate there. Once you're done, naturally.
Okay, what else?
Yeah, is this like a mystery thing or?
Well, I, I thought he was, had that set up for the camera to shoot on it.
Is it a camera?
They've got cameras all of them.
Yeah, but.
Camera that'll shoot on it.
To us, unfortunately. And if you turn it this way and point it towards there pretty much, you can shoot it that way. He'll get it. Great, would you, do me a favor? Would you state your name for the record, please?
Yeah, I'll get right in. Yep. Uh, good evening. My name is Brian Murray from Millennium Engineering. I'm here on behalf of America Company and Ran Realty LLC. Uh, we are the consulting engineers for them. As mentioned, we're here for a site, site plan, uh, approval process. Uh, the America Construction Company is proposing to install or add a, uh, four thousand eight hundred and fifty foot, square foot, um, addition to their current building on it. Associated with that, and just to point it out, that four thousand eight hundred and fifty is comprised of basically two additions here. One in the back, this is for storage purposes. The one on the side right here for the, is an extension of their maintenance, uh, area for their fleet vehicles. Associated with the, uh, building addition is, uh, site work that needs to be done on it. Um, currently, there is, I'll probably just stand up for this, through this, just to point through this if that's okay with you. With the existing building here, currently there is a, a bottom-up slope that runs right along this, um, tree line that's shown here on it, and you can see it by the contours as well. In order to, uh, provide this, um, additional building space, which will allow for, um, truck deliveries off the back, we have to extend out the, uh, the area here in order to provide level service for these trucks to come in, back up, and then exit the site this way. So that's the intention, uh, of the, the vehicle traffic here for the trucks. They're gonna come in through this portion of the site, as I mentioned, come in, come back out. Currently, all traffic is accessing through here, uh, and it gets quite a bottleneck in here for the construction company. So hopefully with that addition and the, uh, loading dock over in this area will help improve some of the, uh, the vehicle traffic on, on site. So relative to, uh, the associated improvements on it, it's the cutting back of this hill on it that I mentioned. Uh, the installation of bituminous concrete in this area as shaded in the gray and the associated stormwater improvements that are needed with it. That includes, uh, catch basins, manholes, uh, a vortex unit, uh, for treatment of the stormwater and an underground storage system here.
Is that like a storm septic?
Yeah, yeah, the vortex unit, yeah, absolutely. Swirl technology on it, yeah, to remove sediments on it, so. So we'll get some cleaning from, uh, the stormwater on it, and then it'll fall into the, uh, underground storage, then ultimately I'll let into the, uh, wetland located, uh, is approximately sixty, seventy feet away on it, so. I'm sorry, I, I take that back. It's, it's a hundred-foot buffer is right to here, so it's a hundred feet in that length right there.
Just a quick question. Is this gone before Concom yet?
No, we're, we're trying to. We're, uh, one of the problems we're having right now is the Concom has asked for, uh, a certificate of compliance from when the building was originally done back in nineteen eighty-six.
Wow.
We're trying to find those documents, and they were ready to submit with them. They just want to have that cleared up prior to us submitting on it. So the, uh, environmental scientist, Mark West, is working on that. Uh, and there's also another round of improvements that was done in, uh, around two thousand that there wasn't a, you know, there's no record of a certificate compliance on it right now. So everyone's going back through their records. We've been contacting other engineering companies that worked on it to see if we can find paper trail on it, and we're almost there, but we're not.
Maybe D E P has a copy of it or something.
Yeah.
They get a copy of that stuff, too.
Yeah.
That's true. We, no, we didn't think of that.
I know Mark has, Mark West has been calling everybody inside on this.
Yeah, he went to, uh, Joneson Beach as well as Beals, uh, the, the engineering firms, but, um, you know, it's a good question. I don't know if he went to D E P or not.
Yeah.
But it's worth a shot.
Can't hurt.
No.
But this particular section, uh, with that, what did, what did you call it?
Disturbance pipe?
It's like a retention?
Yeah, this is an underground storage. What is this? It's five-foot diameter pipes, two of them.
Two pipes.
Right, right here on it. They are perforated, and then there's crushed stone around it, and then there is a impervious, uh, fabric.
So you build in a box.
Right, you build a box.
Fill with pipe and a crushed stone.
Yeah, and then it's covered.
The water goes through the pipes.
Yeah.
And then.
It doesn't leach out.
Doesn't leach out.
It stays in there.
But when it fills up, it sluices or spills out to.
Which is ultimately comes out the pipe here on it. We're, we're just slowing down the flow. We're trying to match.
You're just attenuating velocity.
Yeah.
This is, there's no settling at all.
No, no, there, there's no settlement in that. Uh, it's, it's just a matter of trying to maintain pre and post rates of flow.
Of flow.
And that's the state allows that to go directly into the, the water resource?
Soon we get eighty-five percent T S S approval.
Cleaning with the vortex unit right above it.
That's gonna give you your eighty-five percent, right?
That's correct.
Because the Concom is in charge of stormwater as far as the bylaws. Do we have bylaws yet? I don't know.
Well, what you do, you do reference it within the planning board regulations, so, uh, but obviously they're gonna be the ones that are gonna go through that, through every little point.
And you're gonna have eighty-five percent from the storm septic.
Right, right. So all that will absolutely be, uh, reviewed by the conservation commissioner, uh, so.
Well, would, wouldn't it be better to go to them first and get that cleared up so that if they decide to move it or?
Right.
Change it and before we approve?
Well, we would come back to you with a, with a change if we had to at this point. Right now, the, the, the effort's hoping to get moving on this project.
You're, you're the engineer, obviously. You, you had to do your stormwater calcs. You, you must have submitted those as part of the package.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
Did you get it?
Perhaps it would.
So did you.
Where are they?
No, it said it was included.
I got two copies.
Yeah, yeah. And by the way, my name's Harry.
Okay, Harry.
And, um, the, um.
We write that down.
Yeah, jot that down. Take a note, take a note. And, um.
But you, you've gone before the zoning board because it, it's in a water, is it a water resource area? Right, right. We have gone, we, we've gone to two town boards already. Uh, some of the improvements associated with this are, uh, we, there's gonna be a new septic system required on it. Uh, we have.
Who's that?
That will be located on, over in this area right here, on a separate property.
Whose property is that?
This is property of Norrell.
It's also our same owners.
It's your property?
Different name.
Same owners, yeah.
A different lot.
Correct, yeah. We went before, uh, Z B A to clarify that so we could get a, uh, well, we went to the attorneys to get a, uh, an easement for that, I guess.
Your own property you're getting an easement for?
Well, it's a different lot.
Right.
But yeah, it's the same owners, so we had to get an easement because it's a different property. In case that property sells in the future, you have to show an easement on it.
Right. So they, uh, so we received approval from Board of Health in September on it. One of the conditions, uh, Lenny just mentioned is that, uh, the easement information has to be submitted to the, uh, Board of Health prior to, uh, receiving their permit to construct out there, and I know you're working on that now.
The Board of Health has approved it?
Yes, Board of Health has approved it. We've been in front of the zoning board and.
Like confirmation of that?
Yeah, sure do, Chris.
Uh, we, there's a copy in the, uh, the submittal that I, that I put in there.
Subject to the easement being subject.
Subject to the easement.
Just so we don't have an issue with it. Stipulated. Do we have to show that on a site plan approval as part of the site plan approval?
The easement?
Uh, yeah, the easement. We have to show that easement. We have to show the proposed septic. I'm ju, I'm just letting you know, we have to show certain things.
And the approval from the Board of Health.
On the MyLars. We, we need to show those things, so there might be a little bit of, you might be redrawing.
You need to pay our trial.
So I'm just, for the site plans, you need the septic field shown on there.
Yeah, or make, oh.
Any and all improvements, so.
Yeah, any and all improvements, okay. Uh, getting back to the stormwater issue.
Yeah.
You haven't gone before Concom yet. You will be going before them.
Yep.
Uh, you, you've already submitted the stormwater calcs? You, you.
We submitted them to you, to the planning board.
Great, great. So those can go to, those can go to, well, they can go to, they can go to Larry Graham to review them, and then Concom can just tap into that.
We have two copies, so.
Right, but one can go to Larry.
And our, our submittals to the Concom will have reports included in that as well, so.
Absolutely, and it, you'll just be saving time because Larry Graham's work goes to the planning board and go to Concom.
This is, so that's like a dual review? He, he handles both?
All the time.
Nice.
He'll handle it for them as well.
You can do it simultaneous.
Yeah. You can be. Well, that, that's what we were trying to do is to get them both going at the same time here, but this, uh, uh, the issue of the certificate of compliance has slowed us down on it, so.
Clean up one before you can start the other. Yeah, I get it. I know. I used to be on Concom for a while.
Don't you love that?
Yeah, it was quite, uh, from nineteen eighty-six, too, so it's, it's a reach back to find the information right now.
Eighty-six?
Eighty-six.
When we built this construction.
Concom does not have records that far back.
No, I didn't think so.
They don't, yeah. I know.
No.
But doesn't this, doesn't that have to be registered?
That's why I said go, no, back then, no. No, registering, registering the decisions and things such as that only occurred after a commissioner got on, had to get bounced off.
So what, what happens if they can't find it?
What's his name?
Uh, we're probably gonna have to prepare a, uh, a, a new survey or use some of the existing survey that we've done for this and file a new document.
Make a new as-built or something, right?
Yeah.
We're gonna have to compare it to the old.
Because you're gonna, your building.
True, but we're gonna have an as-built saying we complied with all the requirements from nineteen eighty-six.
Not if you don't have it.
Well, we have to find the, the documents, what the spec, you know, what was required, yeah.
Wetlands change.
I know the mirrors, one of them's gonna stash it in one of his drawers.
All right, so you asked for a lot of waivers, so do you wanna?
Uh, well, let me just, just to finish up on that, we talked about the septic on it. Uh, we also been to the Z B A on it. Uh, we were required to go there for two reasons. One, we're in the Water Resource District, and the second is, is that this is a, classified as a transport terminal. In other words, one, two vehicles being maintained there for commercial purposes, so. For those two reasons, we went to the Z B A. We received approval from the Z B A October second, I believe, on it. Uh, they've issued their special permit on it. Uh, there's a copy included in the submittal that we provided. Please note, there was a, a minor date, someone who signed it from the Z B A put the wrong date on it. I do have.
Didn't we notice that?
I think somebody might have pointed that out. Yeah, I do have additional.
Obviously a script is there.
Uh, Howard, I can provide you with the latest and greatest, the one where they corrected it. It was initialed out and, uh, so.
Just crushed.
So that's, that's where we are with the permitting process right now. Z B A, Board of Health behind us. We're looking at Planning Board and Concom ahead of us right now. Waivers, as you mentioned. We are requesting three waivers on this. Uh, the first one is the, uh, providing a landscape plan on it. We're requesting, uh, uh, not providing a landscape plan due to the, uh, the location of the work within the construction site. Um, we really don't see a lot of opportunity here to do a lot of plantings out there on it. Um, so for that reason, we're requesting the board to, uh, consider, uh, the, no landscape plan.
No resilience?
Well.
Who?
You know.
May resilience?
A lot was concerned about that.
Isn't this the area where the construction equipment travels around in?
Yeah.
Correct, yes, the backyard of the construction site.
Yeah.
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 Only because of the others, I think.
Being a contractor's kids, landscape and construction equipment.
They don't mix too, too well.
They do mix.
You know, if, if we were building, yeah.
Yeah, really well.
I mean, obviously, if we were building, if, if for some reason we were putting an addition up front here.
Reaching to the choir.
In front of the building, and it was gonna be visual to, you know, passersby or something, obviously we'd be doing a landscape plan. But the location of this tucked behind the, the building here, the, we got a forty-foot-high slope here out in the back. There's just, no one's gonna see it, you know, other than.
How's that slope gonna be stabilized?
Uh, we're calling for a two-to-one slope on it. We're using an erosion-controlled blanket, uh, with, with the seed in it on it, so we find.
That's the extent of your landscaping. It's just the soil.
That's correct.
And grass.
Yeah, the grass will grow up in that, right?
Gonna let it naturalize.
The thing that I was concerned about is, is watching the zoning board is that the neighbors were complaining about the noise.
That's correct. That's, that was one of the issues.
If you put some brush and trees there, it would, would absorb some of that, uh, sound barrier kind of thing, and, and that's why I, I wouldn't be for that waiver. How close are you to the next person to the property where the homes are in the residential zone?
From, from right here to the building to the closest residential house is five hundred feet.
Yeah, but where is the end of their lot? That's how it's.
I'm not in.
The zone.
Right. It's a hundred and thirty feet approximately from this point to the back property lot.
So that's not the end of your property?
This is the end of the property right here. What I'm saying is to the property, there's another, there's additional lot in between here. Those, the houses on, uh, Longview Road do not directly abut this.
Yeah, but your facility goes, well, is that north? Your facility goes south and east.
North is, is up this way.
Yeah, I can see the north arrow. Yeah.
So.
But your facility goes much further along, further down. I mean, it's pretty much doubled down.
The, the construction area.
Yeah, yeah, that's probably where they're hearing it from.
Right, and it, absolutely, and I think that was one of the things we were talking about with Lenny, and you were talking with some of the people after is, is that what we see here is, is if there's any noise issue, it's probably happening out in the back, the, this other parcel down here. We hope it's gonna improve because one of the reasons are that there's various storage sheds uh, out in this parcel here. When we build the addition, we're not gonna be able to have that stuff inside. The, the trucks aren't gonna have to access way down out in the back out here.
I believe you'll find that in the record of the Board of Health. I asked that question, um, to Lenny at the, at the Board of Health, if that was where they were gonna move the things that were gonna be worked on, started up and all that into the new larger building. And, um, I think you'll see that, that question was pretty much answered at that time that it's going to remediate or at least abate any noise that's going on down below, because it's all gonna move out.
It's not gonna abate all of it, you know, it's certainly.
Of course it's not gonna abate all of it. It's gonna abate some of it.
Right, right. We, we think it's gonna be, improve the conditions.
Yeah, as the company grew, we started just adding storage trails to the back of the property, to the right side of that, and we've got, uh, almost a dozen trailers now of tires, uh, amplifiers for Comcast, different supplies, and so it's just, it's inefficient and wasteful anyways for us to even work that way, so that's why we're building this addition. And, uh, once we get that forty-eight-hundred square feet built, we'd be able to consolidate, put all our stuff in there. It just helps us with inventory, but it also saves, because we don't have to drive, uh, a tractor or a machine from the building to the, those storage trails out back to, to fetch the stuff, too.
Do you anticipate this is gonna create more noise than is there now?
No, we think it'll reduce the noise because, like I said, when we have to, um, when we have to access the storage trails that are out here, we have to drive a backhoe from here to here to get it. We have to pile that. Exactly, and it's, and, you know, construction work's not the neatest guys in the world either, so you can imagine what it looks like. It, it's kind of a mess. It's very inefficient. By putting it in here, we can have a person in charge of our inventory. It'll be on shelves. Uh, this'll be full ceiling height like a, uh, Sam's Club Warehouse or a Home Depot where we can stock stuff high and have everything inside of this. Uh, we think that'll reduce the noise, uh, also reduce us from having to pile snow back there and drive back here just to, to fetch our materials as well.
What about dumpsters, Lenny? Where, where are the dumpsters right now?
We have, uh.
We have, uh, one dumpster, like in this area right here, and we have two more that we use for recycling steel, and a fourth one for recycling, uh, wire, 'cause we do a lot of overhead utilities now, so we're taking down a lot of overhead wire and recycle it, so we got one for that, a couple for, uh, other recycling, and one for trash as well.
Would, would the board, would, would this be easier for the board if, when these folks come back, we had, uh, a sheet showing the septic system? And a sheet that would show the full extent of both properties, so that we can get a better handle on this? Would that help?
What scale is this at?
This is at a twenty, twenty scale.
So maybe a, a forty or a fifty scale?
Right.
Zoom out, get the other properties and the other.
Right.
Full the extent of the other one.
This, this picture here kind of doesn't fit the pattern that you've got there, my.
Well, because that's showing both of us, you're showing aerial shot.
Yeah, it's a.
Yeah, so it shows the equipment back here, it doesn't show the property line, of course.
Oh, this is a different, this is your other lot, is that what you're telling me?
No, no, no.
That aerial, what you're seeing right there also shows us.
A protrusion there.
Out there, which is not.
This little jumming thing.
You don't believe you own.
No, that's, it's, we've, we've.
And whose property is this?
No, no proof that you own it.
Who?
Well, it's just, it's not on, you know, on the final plans at the Registry of Deeds.
There's no proof that you own that?
Yeah.
What's this, who owns this one?
The, the, the tower facility is owned by San Giorgio Realty.
I think that was sold though, I believe that was sold, wasn't it?
That's the, the, when we did the research for the property, that was the latest name on it.
Okay.
So within the last couple of months, it might have sold within the last month or two.
It's, um, my two cousins, Ralph Mir and Reno Mirror, owned that property, but I, I, I thought they sold that though, I, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong about that, but, um.
It's not under your ownership, which is part of this application.
That's, yeah, it's slightly different ownership.
They own it, they, they, they signed this form for this application. There's three owners to this property.
Uh, Ralph Mir and Reno Mirror and Antonio Mirror, is that the one?
Yeah.
Yeah, they signed, three signatures are on it.
Cousins that owned that other lot?
And then Ralph Mir, two of those owners, Ralph and Reno, Antonio's my father, he wasn't proud of San Giorgio, which is what owned the tower sites. That next site up is, uh, where the tower is, going up Long Hill.
But they were renting it, weren't they? They were getting rented.
They were, two, I believe, the, uh, cell tower owners.
Uh-huh.
But.
So that's this one, and that's zone.
I don't know which one you're pointing at, I'm sorry.
Um, industrial.
In zone industrial.
Alright.
Maybe what would make things a lot easier for the board? Again, is the shot showing, is it, don't have to modify anything, just making the plan.
Right, I don't know.
Add a sheet. Show where the proposed septic's gonna be, you're gonna end up doing that for Concom anyway, and stuff like that, so they can verify and all that. And, um, and again, like Howard said, pull back, pull this back so that we can see the extent of, uh, the lot that you're discharging the water onto, that might help. And by looking at that, we'll be better able to see, um, the abutting properties.
Okay.
So that maybe if the board wants to explore some sound screening or plantings, maybe they could.
Right, now, we don't have a survey for all that area out in the back, are you requesting that be all surveyed out in the back out there, or?
Well, um.
I mean, this, this property.
Represented on a plan, right? I mean, this is something that would be recordable, in recordable format, format.
Okay.
I mean, you're discharging water onto a lot. We're, we need to see the extent of the lot.
Okay.
Harry, just to clarify, you're requesting that they show this other lot?
Yeah, it's all part of it, yeah.
That, that's part of this?
Yeah, it's because you're discharging water onto it.
Do you have a survey for, for this area?
Uh, portions of it.
Portions of it, yeah.
That's where the fill pile is, I think we did survey that, yeah.
Really to.
Yeah, but it does.
That showed the property line, larger zone.
So you can take it off of other plans. Oh, yeah.
That's where I was going, I just didn't want, you wanted.
Now I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, we wanted to show them.
So if I could, if we need to pull some information off aerials and, uh, you know.
Yeah, this, this is just for site plan approval.
Okay, good.
Now, how many trucks are you going to do repair?
The whole fleet, we have.
You've got a lot of trucks.
Oh, yeah, we have over a hundred trucks.
So, all a hundred are gonna be?
No, we have remote.
Done there?
No, we have remote yards, we have a yard in Boston, Worcester, Taunton, and Woburn. Because that's where our work takes us, and it's just, it, you know, diesel fuel's over four dollars a gallon, so we try to park the trucks as close to the jobs as possible. Less than half of them are in Georgetown, less than half.
But is this the only place for repair?
Um, it's the only place where we do in-house repairs, when, when those remote yards need repairs, we, we send it out to, uh, another garage. 'Cause it's just too costly to have a dump truck drive from Boston to Georgetown just for a repair, so, you know, in Boston, we use Salamis, and in Woburn, we use, you know, Tim's Automotive, and Worcester, we use someone else. Uh, and we have two remote mechanics as well that drive to those, you know, wherever the location they are needed at.
So how many trucks would be repaired there?
Um, total equipment on that site any given day, uh, between forty and fifty pieces total, that includes every backhoe, every bulldozer, every car, every pickup, total, maybe forty or fifty of them are at that site.
Forty and fifty would be, uh, taken care of in the new facility?
No, that facility's always been there, um, this area of the building.
This construction is for storage.
Six bays here, and that's gonna remain six bays. Uh, this addition is just for warehouse storage, we're not adding any repair facility, the repair facility stays the same, the six bays.
Oh, I saw it on the plan, so I thought that was, that was also gonna be new.
We ma- we're gonna make, we might make these two bays longer, but it's still gonna, still just be six bays. That stays the same, it's been like that since, um, nineteen eighty-six.
It's a, oh, I see, I'm trying to, to associate how many, uh, trucks and traffic would go in there.
Yeah, that, I think will stay the same, we used to actually keep more here, it's just, as fuel and gas got more expensive, we started renting yard space closer to the jobs. We always had a site in Boston where we parked equipment, but now, like I said, we also rented Woburn, Worcester, and Taunton just to keep the mileage to a minimum, so we parked at those locations. We never used to, we used to have a lot more here, we used to park a lot more equipment here, and we used to do heavy earthworm jobs, we used to cap landfills and build playgrounds, we used to have
Right.
excavators and bulldozers and, and dumps, we used to have fleets of them, and we just got out of that business, we just couldn't make money out of it, so now we just stick with the underground utilities and overhead utilities. We actually, so we actually have fewer vehicles here now than we did ten years ago, we used to have a lot more.
It, it sounds like the point of this really is to organize your inventory.
It is, sir, yeah.
Of your own equipment, so that you can be more efficient.
Yeah, right now, we use a, a portion of this office space for the storage and warehouse, and it's just not efficient, yeah, it's not the way to do it. Uh, like I said, as we started doing more overhead utilities, we just had to increase our storage, so we started adding box trailers and ground-level trailers and, unsightly to say the least, but also very inefficient and wasteful. But, uh, till it answers your question, yeah, we have six repair bays now, we're gonna, it'll still be six after we're done.
Where's the hazmat area? I saw it when I was reading that, it talked about you had some section of, I don't know if it was the new building or the old building that was.
Well, behind the shop, there's floor drains in the shop, and there's a tank out back here that collects everything that goes into the floor, um, and then we have to have that pumped out, is that, is that what we were talking about?
Perhaps.
Yeah, that could be.
There will be a new, uh, a separate room, uh, the reconfiguration within it, there is gonna be a hazmat area for any hazardous materials to be stored.
Right, inside the building?
Inside the building.
The new, the new fire code requires that, you know, uh, storage of cleaning supplies by mechanics and paints need to be in a hazmat room, uh, which was never required before, now we're going to have to, um, do one to meet the new code, which would be probably in this corner of the building right now. It's always been stored there, but now there's different requirements as far as how you store it, you have to have walls around, so obviously we have to comply with that.
Where's, oh, I'm sorry? No, I was just, I was just gonna.
Did you get cleared up with the state with your penalty that you were cited for?
Penalty with?
You were cited for, for dumpage and whatever was done out there? No? Did you run the computer? I saw it on the computer listed as a violation in, in the DEP. No? From the DEP, did you ever look at the state?
Yeah, um.
Look again.
That might have been, was that for the development across the street?
Oh, I'm sorry, was that for the apartments across the street, that's, um.
Twenty-one E or something?
Excuse me?
Was it a twenty-one E or something for another property?
There was, there was a wetland issue for the, uh, the other development there.
Correct, it was.
A replication area.
Apartments, not you.
Those are owned by my, those are owned by Ralph and Reno Mirror, um, slightly different ownership, that's part of San Giorgio, but like I said, that's across the street from here, it's not this, not this parcel though.
Could I ask, what, what's, what was that third waiver you mentioned?
I've only got one waiver so far, you got two more.
Oh, okay, and ju- just for, uh, general, uh, the waivers need to be listed on the front page, I believe.
On the plan.
On the plan, on the first page of the plan.
On the cover.
The requested waivers.
Are they, were they on the cover?
Okay.
One page five of five, and four of five.
Okay, great.
One sixty-five eighty-three E, paragraph L.
Yeah, we have them on the cover.
One sixty-five eighty-three L, paragraph C. One sixty-five eighty-three, section O, paragraph one.
Okay, so.
So site landscaping and ones.
What does that mean?
Yeah.
Storm.
I don't know, I'll have to read that one myself, but you know what, that's, that's all right, Larry Graham can give us a, a little bit of, uh.
I, I reference that because it, your, your regulations do refer to the stormwater management on it, so.
Sounds new.
And removal of trees in the setback, and that's in that slope you're referring to?
Correct, that's up here.
See, that's, that's associated with the noise again, you start cutting those down, you're gonna make it more noisy.
Well, there's a forty-foot difference between the elevation here.
What's at the top of the slope?
Oak trees, mostly hardwoods.
Tree?
Yeah, mostly hardwoods.
The top of the slope is gonna remain tree?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, we, we don't wanna take them down now, absolutely.
Yeah, unless we have to take down the bottom.
But it's just gonna be to this new, what we're showing as a tree line right here.
Yeah, it's pretty well forested, I mean, the trees are pretty big.
You're gonna leave them?
We wanna leave them, oh, absolutely, we wanna leave them, yeah.
Can have as much sound attenuation as you possibly can at that point, I don't think.
Sure.
Putting a couple of azaleas in isn't gonna change it.
Right. So, so those are the, the three waivers that were requested.
Does anybody have any more questions?
No?
I'll, uh, accept the motion now to. Oh, my apologies, sir, my, would you stay in for the record, please, sir?
My name's Michael Ridden.
Michael Ridden.
I live at Seven Longview Way.
Hello, Mr. Ridden. You're in the butter.
I am one of the abuts, that's correct. And, I have, um, as one of the abuts, if you go down to the end of the street, the houses at the end of the street, they have a clear view right.
Longview?
At the end of Longview.
Yep.
Four or five houses have a clear view right into Mirror Construction's site as it is now.
Uh-huh.
And if you're talking about cutting that hill back, it's only gonna improve the view into their construction site, and there's no noise reduction whatsoever. And my other question is, is, a couple of ye- what, I think it was two years ago or three years ago, Mirror's cut back part of the hill so that they could put a, I believe it was a, um, uh, a, storage for sand or whatever it was. The slope has never, never been revegetated, and there's an orange snow fence that sits at the top of the hill. I mean, there's kids that walk through the woods, I mean, it's probably a twenty-foot drop right off of this, right down the side of the hill. Nothing but a snow fence is, of it's there. And if you look at the state road that they put in, and you look at the slope on that, not, not, not the mirrors, but the access road that was put in, if you look at the slope on that, you drive up there, and you can just look at all the runoff. None of that vegetation is taken and held, so the, the slope that they're talking about putting in on their site is much steeper than what the state put in on the side of access road, which every time you get a heavy rain, it just keeps washing out, and if, and if you go up there now, you, you can see it, you can just see the erosion coming down the side of the hill, not to mention the noise. And my other question is, is there gonna be limitations as to when they can work on these vehicles? 'Cause I mean, they're down there working on Sundays, Saturdays, all hours of the day and night. I mean, the noise starts at five-thirty, six o'clock in the morning, and I'm in the construction business myself, and I understand they need to make money, and I understand they were there long before the houses went up, but there has to be some type of a regulation as to what hours they're allowed to do business, and how much noise they're allowed to create.
You getting all that one? Anything else, sir?
Nope, that's basically what, what, what I'm here for is to see what it is that their plan was, I haven't seen the plan until tonight, and I mean, if they're gonna cut back that slope, they're taking out quite a bit of vegetation that is there as a noise reduction, and like I said, if you go to the houses at the end of the street, there's, there's nothing there as far as a buffer zone.
Could I ask, sir, that, um, when you show our pulled-back view?
I think that'll, that's exactly gonna show the area, 'cause I think what the area we're talking about.
Please show some of the, some of the abutting property lines?
Sorry, I think the area is.
And let's see that, make that clear so that we can, uh, we can all be clear what is being affected.
Yep.
And what we're dealing with. And it'll, it may become a little bit clearer for everybody concerned.
Yep.
I think we can do a, a better job.
So if he's, if he, if, if he's talking about, if he lives off of like the right-hand side of that drawing, there's gonna be less activity there according to what your plans are.
That's correct.
That's gonna be my question.
Yeah, so that, if you could like show what is and what's proposed, so that it's like.
Yeah, I think we just need a, a, something greater showing the neighborhood, better view.
I'm sure he's not gonna be the only neighbor that's gonna be inquiring.
And he's gonna pay close attention, the gentleman's gonna pay close attention and, and be here at the continuation.
What's gonna prevent them from, they get their building, and they say that they aren't gonna have storage trailers or anything else down there, what's gonna prevent them from continuing to do that?
Continuing to do what?
To have storage trailers and to keep using that lot that they're saying they're not gonna, that, that area that they're saying they're not gonna be using anymore, is the planning board gonna put something in that says that they can't use that area for storage and, and equipment and running, running the machines back and forth down there?
Well, it is in the industrial zone.
I, I, like I said, I understand that, I understand they need to, they need to have a business, they've been there a lot longer than, than the houses were there, and they need to make money, and I understand that, but there also has to be a balance, um, as far as what hours of business they're allowed to do and.
To, to answer your question, sir. Um, the, the, under site plan approval, the planning board, if it so chose, could, uh, in May, decide that, um, some visual screening and perhaps some sound attenuation may be necessary to provide a buffer between the residential and the activities on the lot, and, uh, that may or may not happen, that's up to the board. Um, we'll have a better idea what we're looking at when we, when we see the plans. We'll have a better idea where your house is, where your neighbors' houses are, might wanna bring them and let them know about it.
And after the plans are done, do a sidewalk.
With, with respect to hours of operation and things such as that, my understanding is that is, uh, one of the conditions of site plan approval that could be attached to this, if the board decided that. Does that answer your question?
Yep, sure does.
And bear in mind, this is not something that's gonna be decided tonight, this is gonna be going to review. Uh, the, the, this'll be a little while, you don't want it to close tonight anyway, if you're going before Concom, then each week, you don't wanna change your. You'll probably want to run this parallel with Concom.
Absolutely.
So that you can be at both finish lines at the same time. Uh, with that in mind, fact that it's eight-thirty at night, is there any more questions?
I have one question for Mr. Ridden. Mr. Ridden, when you look down on the, the Mirror Property.
Yep.
What part of the property do you look at?
My house, I don't have a clear view at Mirror's property.
But the houses that you're talking about.
The houses down lower.
They're, they're seeing the trailer area or the proposed building area?
They basically see his entire construction site, the houses at the end of the street.
Like from the Goodyear Blimp, the whole thing?
They're, they're a pie.
I know, I know the neighborhood, I was just wondering if it was any particular area.
Actually, Harry, I, I have a question, and I don't know the answer to, I'm just, uh, and I'm not sure how this plays out with the planning board too, is we are proposing work on one lot on it. We have a, a second lot that also has is, that has use in what seems to be what some of the contention is here on this. So I don't know how, if you're gonna, it's, it's a question, can you, how does that get restricted, that area on the other lot?
What, what plans do you have for that?
I think you bring.
The other lot is this one over here.
Yeah, that's.
Go wild? I mean.
Yeah, we park equipment there, that's all, we, you know, we wanna get rid of those box trails, we don't need those anymore if we get the, if we get the warehouse area.
Yeah, no, I don't think it's gonna revert back to vegetated area or anything like that, I still think they're gonna use it, it's just not gonna be as, as much use.
The use may be less intensive.
That's correct, that's correct, yes.
And hopefully that will, will happen, and. Uh, wi- with respect to the second lot, you're gonna need to show that, you're proposing work on that second lot, you're discharging stormwater onto that lot, uh, and.
But that happens on numerous site plans, that happens on, you know.
Yeah, but most people don't put a hundred-and-fifty-foot pipe and then run it over into the other lot.
Put it that way, you can't do that in this state.
But that's where the water's been going forever, I mean, the water, it just slopes that way anyways, even before there was a building there.
I do.
You know, cause I think that's something the board and us are gonna have to, you know, be, you know, understand as we go through.
You guys are opening the door, I see the line, you're pointing right to it, you're pointing to that of the lot. I can see it.
Say what?
You're pointing to that of the lot with the discharge line.
Yeah, you got a discharge line right there.
And not for anything, but the impervious area continuing below that, um, you, you already have area on that lot that is over it. It's a little, it could, some people could say it's quite dis- disingenuous.
What?
To be presenting only that lot on a plan and representing it as the lot where the work is. When, when, I mean, anybody can take a picture.
Yeah.
I mean, and see that the, the facility in question here is twice the size of what that lot, that plan's showing. You need to show that.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not debating showing, I'm just, as we go through the process here of determining if you're gonna be setting uh, requirements, does it go to six Norena Way or does it, you know, that's what we're here for, for site plan, and then you have the other, which I'm not sure what the number is, you know, eight Norena Way or, or whatever it's called on it. Uh, that, that's my only point, I'm not trying to.
We'll, we'll work it all out.
Yeah, I'm just bringing it up, that's all, Harry, yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm sure we're gonna come to.
We're not trying to be, we're not trying to be disingenuous here about not showing anything on that plan.
Something that I would like addressed is if there is a slope that could injure somebody, whether it be an adult or anyone, that you show something that will not allow that. Some sort of a fence maybe with a, with shrubbery disguising the fence or something. Just so as Mr. Ridden said, if a kid gets in there and falls down, and God knows, when I was roaming around my father's contractor's yards, that was the great mystery. What's down there?
Your backyard, basically.
Yeah, you know, and climbing through, it's a great adventure climbing through equipment.
Yeah.
And you don't want somebody falling down in between a machine or something.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Very attractive to kids. Again, when we pull back and we see the, the big picture, this'll all become a washware, easier to lock the boat. Um, without, um, perhaps we could, uh, continue this, until you can come back and bring us some new views.
Much time, much time you need.
Yeah, well. Make a, a motion or a vote to establish an M account?
Oh, absolutely, sure, sure, somebody wanna make a, make a motion? Mr. Rich moves to have the applicant establish an M account. Is there a second?
I second.
Ah, Tilly, Tilly.
Tilly wins with her second, all in favor?
I'm gonna get buzzers so people get to. Then you know where it goes, the lights up.
This is why we hit till eleven o'clock.
All right.
You said that before, I was like, yeah.
Control them, I don't have a whistle. Motion carries.
Don't give me any ideas.
Electrify the seats.
An extension, a continuation of this, and, uh, let's give you.
December twelfth or the twenty-sixth?
The, the what?
Twenty who?
The twenty what, the December what?
Twelve.
Or.
Or did you say, or twenty-sixth? The day after Christmas, we're gonna have a.
I'd like to make a motion to review the town plan this.
Okay, yeah, on the scheduling.
Or January ninth, is that?
January ninth sounds.
That's far enough away from the first.
How's January ninth sound, does that fit in?
It's okay with you, but.
Jan ninth.
January.
Generally, January ninth fitting to everybody's schedule?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
You'll have all our requests.
I think so, I, you probably have some Concom information too, but.
Yeah.
We're hoping, we're hoping to be right, hopefully we've submitted by then, yeah.
Again, the, the goal is, we'll reach that.
Yeah.
You know, you get to Concom's finished gate, ah, finished gate, less, uh, less drawing. What? Oh, yeah, okay, motion's been made, uh, motion's been made by, by Chris to, uh, continue this to January ninth, two thousand thirteen. Is there a second? Mr. Watts seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, the guys have it. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you.
See you on January ninth.
Yeah, all right, see you then.
We're sixty days from filing to have your public hearing, and that decision ninety-eight.
We're not waiting.
You know, to extend it, like, you know.
What's with this?
We'll probably not be ready.
That's why I track all the dates.
Yeah, but.
There, there's a form H for extension of time, but you don't need it unless you're going past the ninety days.
Right, so the next time, he's, he's still gonna be.
Yeah, I'll have it in the next.
I, I brought up on my little smartphone, just a map of that area. And it's bigger than, it's bigger. The construction site.
So what do we talk about, our December twenty-sixth, scratch that meeting?
December twenty-sixth.
Are there no workhouses, no prisons?
I don't know why we even bother to schedule meetings.
We shouldn't. All right, make a motion.
Do I hear a motion now that I'm acting chair, do I hear a motion to?
Absolutely.
To, um.
I second.
Eliminate the December twenty-sixth?
Yeah.
I second the motion.
Alleged meeting?
Yes.
Yeah. We vote.
Seconded?
I seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Only Harry.
The revolutionary committee has met.
You were just named a seven subcommittees, Harry.
Yeah. Harry, we just.
I thought you bossed me off, I was like, I can go home now. We abolished the twenty-sixth.
No, we voted you to be the only member to show up.
No, really, did you kill the twenty-sixth?
We killed it.
You did?
We killed it.
I love it.
Trying to be efficient, Harry, move the ball down the field, let's go.
Ah, you're absolutely right.
Continuation of the, uh.
Park and Rec.
The Park and Rec in here?
Somewhere.
Bring him up.
Um, like to reopen the public hearing for Park and Recreation Athletic Facilities, one eighty-six East Main Street. Is there an applicant here, representative?
With his posse?
It's not a gang, it's a club.
It's a commission. Uh, this is a special permit. Continuation. Great, hi Lou. How are you?
Doing well.
I'm glad to hear that.
You got a full house tonight, huh? Jim Dement doesn't.
Mr. Mamalad, I, it was explained to my colleagues that we're not at the sidewalk, that I demonstrated the speed limit on the day of the sidewalk, and we've agreed that the thirty mile an hour speed limit might be a little much, or twenty-five.
Yes.
If you saw the three guys standing there taking cover when my truck came up that road, twenty-five miles an hour. How are you?
Good, as I came into town hall, I, I did kinda say, gee, I wonder what the, what the width of that, that one-way coming in is with that big pole there, so.
Yeah, and by the side of, uh, by the side of the building.
I wonder if anybody's hit that lately.
I noticed extra volume, but, but the gas, uh, the gas.
Probably.
Neither the.
Probably a good idea.
Yeah. Okay, Lou, um, you know the drill, we were going over, uh, some, uh, some of the, uh, plans for, um, the recreational facility, uh, we were hoping that we could get some, uh, revisions done on the plan. And, uh, I think I have the right set of plans here, and I'm trying to remember where we left off, do you remember where we left off? What sheet we were on?
This is the same set that we were working from, so I, I think you may have jumped ahead, um, went sort of from the, um, the entrance and egress of the parking area, and then I think you may have jumped ahead at least in whatever most that you prepared to identify where you wanted the sidewalk or, or what your feeling was about where the sidewalk was.
Yeah, oh, right.
Circled around the baseball path, uh, the back of the baseball field. I don't know if there was anything in between there that you jumped off of.
No, no, the last thing we dealt with there was, um, where the, um, which side of the road the sidewalk would be on. And where are we?
It's two point four.
Two four? Are we at two four? Two point four? Grab more colors of your mind, just in case. That's good. So, um, uh, i- is everyone pretty much agreed that, and we're all looking at the same plan, right? Everyone pretty much agreed that this sidewalk that seems to be shown on, what is that, the southern side of the, the facility? That we'd be moving it to the north?
Yes.
Is everybody good on that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you give Lou some direction on that?
Field side.
Move it to the field side, and, um, that'll obviate the need for a cross, crosswalk up at the top there?
Yes.
Jim?
Can I just make another comment? That section two might be good to make a, a foot wider, just because it's always, there'll be, people be going both ways quite a bit around that section. I don't know if, would you have, if you have the room to make that sidewalk wide enough, that's all. I wouldn't, I wouldn't put it in the condition of plan, I just wanted to mention, someone's in a wheelchair going by and someone's crosswalking the other direction, it'd be good to have a wider if possible, I don't know what he's got for room there, I don't wanna ha- fringe on the buffer zone, but if you can make it.
Well, we're talking about going to the other side.
But I think, I think it does make sense, cause also, uh, people will be standing and watching the game.
People will be walking their dog, right?
Exactly.
Get to the dog park, I'm just saying if, I don't know what the limitations in that area is for buffer zone, but if you have the room with the road width and the sidewalk and given an extra six inches or a foot, I would.
Chances are there'd be more traffic here than down by the, by, uh, I went through.
How wide is it now, Lou?
It's just four-foot sidewalk.
Four foot. And that, that's not, is that a vertical curb there?
Um, it's.
Gotta be a six inch?
It's a fairly, it's a fairly flat area through there.
So, well, no, is the sidewalk and the roadway gonna be this, at the same level, or are you gonna have the sidewalk raised?
The sidewalk we raised.
Right. Does that four feet include a six-inch vertical curb, or are you gonna do?
I'm sorry, I thought you said vertical curve, curb.
Curb.
B C U R B. Um, again, the idea here is not to have curbing associated with this. It was, it was just a, it was a cast in place.
Perhaps we shouldn't call it a curb, perhaps it will clarify it to call it a sidewalk reveal. Because it is the sidewalk, it is the slab of the sidewalk, not per se.
You're gonna be turning the sidewalk down. But I, I'm just getting to the point where it's four-foot width and there isn't any more curb, so could you make it four foot, six or five?
Yeah, that's fine, thank you, that's fine.
Same, same amount of labor, a little bit more concrete.
Yeah, I mean, I just, because it is handicap park, I, I, I just, if you envision it, it's just, should be a little wide, that's all. I think it's.
Wherever you, wherever you think you can widen it and make it more, uh, I, I, I'm good for it, wherever you think you can, Lou.
It's a minimum of four.
Yeah.
Okay.
Make it as big as you want it.
And we may need to s- stay strict on the four-foot width in the, um, you know, the first couple hundred feet off of East Main Street.
In some of the areas that are very, very close.
I'm sorry, I'm only talking.
Main Street, I don't think we're talking about that area.
We're just talking on the ball.
What I'm saying is, any, any other, any other spot beyond that.
Yeah, I took it to be just around the ballpark.
Exactly.
What would be the, um.
Pretty much the extent of what's showing on.
Yeah, what you're showing for ballpark area. The area around that, where you're gonna have people congregating, I would expect people, you're not gonna have any parades going up and down that road.
Since you have handicap parking, you might have someone on a wheelchair, they're not gonna wanna go on the grass, they'll get on the concretes, they'll get to the center field and watch the game from there possibly. So, if that's the case, now you've got a wheelchair that's three feet taking up a four-foot sidewalk. Or people might just be, like you said, standing there because they're watching the game from the center field, just.
Not a problem.
Yeah. If you have the.
We actually, we actually have a, a transitional area in here that I, I was thinking about for some drainage, but we might be able to come up with something creative, maybe a strip where the sheet floor comes in and then moves underneath and then the sidewalks above it, so we can, we can, we might even be able to have a, just a, just kind of a viewing area.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, that's, that's simple enough.
Right, right.
That's simple enough.
Little typo up here in this upper note, no biggie. Little typo in the upper note, based, uh, baseball backstop. Seep, what is that, seep?
Seep.
Seep? Seep?
Seep.
Everybody good with that page?
Uh, just one, one question. Clarify something on my.
I try not to bother my kids when they're coloring either.
He's staying inside the lines, you know, he's doing good.
Why, he's an engineer, he can stay inside the lines.
Uh, I, I wonder if you could just point out where exactly the, uh, the boundary of that pond is. We did a sidewalk this Saturday and.
Maybe easier to go back to two point oh.
Cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause I'd actually like to just.
And which pond are you talking about?
Yeah, I wanted to review the location of both of the, both of those good sized ponds.
There's three ponds.
Yeah, I know that there's another one.
We walked by three ponds.
There's this one and then there's another one back here.
One on the right, one on the end.
Yeah, so.
This one is long.
So this area right in here, this is like, currently there's like a new soccer field here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then is here in here. And then the other pond that you're referring to.
Yeah.
Is up in this stretch in here.
I just wanna interrupt for a minute and just mention for the record that the planning board met this past Saturday. Uh, it was publicly noticed, and, uh, there was three members of the planning board there, but there weren't any votes, decisions, or policy decisions that were made, so.
Except for the committees we put Tilly on.
Yeah.
Do you have other questions associated with?
Well, this, this one struck me as being closer, that this was not a, not a very.
Were there two ponds walking in?
Uh, when.
There is, I think it's one, but I think that it goes around, I was looking, I was looking.
Is it one big pond that's got like a peninsula?
On the, when you first walked in, on the right, that's the pond, we call it the soccer ball pond, that's the place where the soccer balls wind up from the U eight kids, it's just beyond the tree line. After you walk by that clearing, you walk in a little ways, you turn and you kinda see it again, it may be just, just deceiving that it's the same pond as from the backside, cause there's, there's a, kind of a lot of trees and clumped in there.
And I was gonna say, you can put the word pond in.
That's a swamp, yeah.
Right, right, it's, it's not super healthy, um, unless it, you know, it's, you're an amphibian and then it's probably paradise in there.
Really? Frog, cats, birds, parents.
In general, we, we think of this as, this is the first pond, this is the second pond. There is another pond on the other side here, which is, I think, the much of the drainage that comes from Pillsbury Lane, that subdivision in there. And there's sort of a break in between, um, where you can actually walk around this pond[1797.34] And there's sort of a break in between, um, where you can actually walk around this pond and sort of be in between the two of them. You have no plans to do any work on that side, that's about the only thing you're gonna have there is, again, the connectivity of the trails, because there's, there's already trails that kinda walk around that other side, so.
Any of it Springfield?
Yes.
All of it is.
No, there's the, well, there's. The first one, copy, the first two aren't, those two aren't, the, um, this, the, the.
Just ground water.
No, no.
No, I don't think.
No, the first two are, are, when they did the lodge, the lodge, uh, sand removal, the reason they stopped is they hit a spring down behind where the Seabergs and the Barney Wrights, right at that, the part that we, no one owns, matter of fact, the part that.
No means land.
Well, it's kinda good, because there is a spring there, in ice skating, you really shouldn't be ice skating in that area. So, um, but it's, yeah, they, they hit a spring and actually they packed up and went home at that point, so.
The, the water comes from the surface water.
Right.
Comes not only from that spring, but all the way from Sawmill Way. There's, there's all wetlands and all that water comes down.
It's all wet, I mean, you could, you could, from the pa- from the path, you could see. It's all, it's all gunk and, you know.
I mean, depending on how far back you wanna pull your boundary.
Yeah.
It's about three hundred acres.
Three hundred acre water shadow, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it's.
I certainly hope the park and rec does mosquito control for the kids.
Um, Lou, does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, actually. I think those are bodies of water that we wanna keep an eye on. Um, we wanna make sure that we don't put a lot of foul ball in the drink.
We're hoping. Do you have other questions?
Just one quick question. Do you know what the dimensions of the, the field now? How far this is down the line?
I think it's three hundred feet. This is a, um, the dimensions here are for Pony. I think I had said this before, it's, it's a kind of go between from Little League to.
Babe Ruth.
To Babe Ruth.
So, it's probably shorter than three thirty, but that is to, to the, uh, foul ball. Thanks.
I think it's, for some reason, I think it's three hundred is, is the dimension. The base paths are like eighty foot, so they can play seventy and eighty. Little League is sixty and Babe Ruth is ninety, like a full size.
So, what are the changes when you went on the site that's different than your plan?
I, I haven't made any changes yet to, to this setup. I thought tonight was supposed to be sort of a continuation of reviewing.
Familiarized with, it, it's a lot different when you, I've been out there a few times, and, but when you actually have drawings on a plan and.
Try to visualize, what is this gonna be?
It's a lot different.
This is, yeah, this is a lot different.
Lots of woods back here.
Yeah, I think, yeah, pretty dense.
Yeah.
Pretty dense.
It's a long way back.
Oh, yeah.
From the curb cut to the field. A long way back.
Well, maybe we could flip to, uh, the, what is it, two point five, Lou, if you would? I guess the first thing that jumps out at me is that, uh, that sidewalk will be on the other side.
Yeah.
As we said.
Continuation.
And, um, due to that, maybe what we'd wanna do is, um, I've seen, what is it, one, two, three, four, um, HP accessible spots?
Yep.
And since the sidewalk would be on the left now. Maybe we wanna flip those over.
Yep.
Put the HP accessible spots closer to the sidewalk, right? That's over there.
And, um, are you gonna move that, uh, would the sidewalk be running along that curb between the dog park and the parking spaces? When, when someone gets out of their, their handicap accessible spot, are you gonna put them into, um, the, that road area, or are you gonna put them outside of the road area?
Um, well, one of the reasons why I kinda stopped down here, you know, is, if it ever comes to pass that there's a way to, um, to go to another parcel in the future, what I was trying to do is, is basically keep my alignment of the road in such a way that you make your way straight.
Safe of projection.
Right. So, it's, so, I mean, and again, this dog park is some simple chain link fencing, which you could pull up and put someplace else.
Could you show me where that fencing is?
Um, that is.
Cause I don't see it anywhere.
With the dog park fencing?
Yeah, I, I don't see it here, and. Am I just not on the right key? Where else the fuck? L four dot two?
I don't know, let's see.
Just to keep the dogs in, not the people in.
I have to keep the people out. Not to keep the dogs in. Yeah. Cause I'm not seeing it on four dot two. So. We're gonna show that, right?
Yep.
Good. Great. Anybody see anything else on here?
Or, or, or not see something.
You know, the only thing I, I see, and, uh, again, we're, um, I, I seem to see the lines for the, uh, the bumpers there.
Yep.
And I don't know, uh, if you have a fence there with a gate at some point, I, I, I don't know how necessary that is, I, I don't know if the board cares to have those. If that helps or hinders when you're plowing, the, um, what are they called? The tire stops pinned into the ground?
Yeah, I think at the last meeting, we talked about.
For the parking area.
Yeah, we may, we may wanna abandon that concept in favor of.
I don't know, the board might wanna retain it here, I don't know. And does everybody know what I'm referring to, I'm talking about that?
Be a continuous, you'll be a continuous wood guard rail with maybe some like reflectors on it, as opposed to, um, using curb stops, I think is a one term.
Yep.
Is used.
Cause it can't go continuous, cause you'll have to let people into the dog park, right? There'll have to be a break in the fence and a break in that, right?
Yeah.
You'll figure it out.
I mean, I guess the thing here is, is if, if we're bringing the sidewalk to the other side, we could easily continue the sidewalk this way and run a section of sidewalk in front and pull this back.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Again.
Yep.
Changing one thing kind of blends and lends itself to a different approach.
You'll make it happen.
Don't you have to have an HP area inside the dog park? HP access inside the dog park?
Inside or into?
I'll be above.
Okay, um, I think it would have to do with the width on the gate. I think it only has, I think it would only have to do with the, the width on the gate and the transition for, say, a wheelchair.
Transition in the soil surface to get inside.
This is not gonna be, uh, it's not gonna be a bad surface, it's gonna be a piece stone surface. But what it could do is sort of like a little transition, you know, kinda almost like a little turnaround, so that there's a, there's a way in, so that there's a segment within the fence line that, that stays as concrete.
When, when I've seen facilities like that, Lou, you, you've got your five foot square before the gate.
Yep.
You, you're able to open the gate, but then you need to have the concrete apron inside, so the person can wheel in, turn, and close the gate behind them, so it's another five foot square piece. And the other thing that, that does is.
Five foot square, you mean five by five?
Right, five, five foot square.
Twenty five foot.
Well, whatever it is, so they can turn.
Right, right.
But the other benefit of that is that your travel path doesn't wear out the piece stone in that location. Cause if, so, it, 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 it helps on both aspects.
Okay, that's a good point.
It's a place to go, once, if a person goes in there in a wheelchair, they're not stuck right at the gate, they should be able to at least get away from the gate. Out of the way of people coming in.
Yeah, well, I guess my immediate thought would be not to stop at a five foot square, but basically to run it as that, you know.
An apron.
Yeah, like a kind of a five foot edge all the way to the back or something like that, it could be kind of a.
No, just, it doesn't have to be all the way to the back, it just has to be a sufficient area to get out of people's way and have space of your own. Like anybody else that would be in there walking a dog.
So, if you had a, if the gate was here, you'd want a pad about the size of this table, Lou.
Sure, you know, size of patio or, or, or a five foot sidewalk, if you would, inside that goes for another ten or fifteen feet.
Be generous.
Yeah, I mean, you.
Yeah. You, you probably can't.
People who are just walking in there with their dogs
Yeah.
will appreciate having some pavement to walk on, too.
Absolutely.
So.
Can't hurt.
You're right.
Yeah, it's not a detriment to anybody.
Not that I'm a a dog aficionado, if you will, but I know a lot about dogs, but.
Pickup and all that.
It's pleased for them to let their dogs run wild, right? So, they go in with a chair and let, cut them loose and say, see ya.
They can also clean the dog off if it's got mud before getting back in their car, gives them a, a, a.
Right, a buff.
Like a mud, a mudroom, I mean.
Can they have one of those showers that they have it?
Mud shaft, but we can, we can work on that.
Tilly had a question, I'm sorry, Tilly, what was it?
How are you gonna take care of the dog waste and how are you gonna monitor?
Got that with the conservation, we have, we'll have pickup sites, they're gonna have to be waste receptacles that are there. Yeah, that's gonna, use the, like, the doggy mitts, um,
A mud mitt?
Yeah, mud mitt, it'll be like a dispenser.
Receptacle on the plan, where you gonna put it and?
Well, we're gonna be seeing a reiteration of that plan and there's gonna be a fence shown and a little bit more detail shown and.
I hate to say it, but I think there are some things that are on this drawing already and the layers just aren't turned on. Because I know the fence is on there because I drew it myself.
Put it on.
What kind of fence is it?
Uh, just a chain link fence, it's, um.
Oh, boy.
It would be, it's.
Electrified.
Four foot high, I think it's nine gauge.
Is it gonna be like the one on the soccer field near, near me on Hillside Drive?
The one that's lifted up, so Peter lifted up, so we could do one underneath it?
It'll be four foot high, chain link, it'll be, um, top and bottom rail.
Is it, is it not gonna be like that?
I'm not familiar with that one, it'll, four foot high coated chain link, chain link fence. Top and bottom rail, and I believe it's nine gauges the wire.
Yeah.
Nine gauges what you typically use for someone like this, six gauges like a backstop, something that's gonna take a little bit of a pounding. Uh, single gate handicap width.
Well, you know, as you stated before, this is one of the first, uh, hearings we've had about this bylaw. And at the time, if you, if you recall, we, we didn't have any provisions of what you had to meet for it, it's just a plain bylaw. And I was questioning that at the time, but I guess with the changeovers and everything, somehow it never got happened. So, I was wondering if, um, perhaps, uh, the planner could do some research, what kind of conditions we can put on this, as far as the pickup of, of the dog waste, the fence, that, that, uh, uh, stone.
What the surface is.
I can break that in.
The stone thing, um, that's gonna have to be graded, it's not always gonna be the way you're going to first put it, so that needs maintenance.
I did a little bit of research, and I, I don't disagree with anything you're saying, I think in general, this is a sim- similar to other site type projects. And, yeah, there are some, maybe some different things that are, maybe that aren't specifically spelled on your bylaw. But a lot of these things, I think, really come down to some common sense.
Sure.
And, again, I think that's kinda what Park and Rec's approach has always been, is to, is if there are ideas that the planning board has, they wanna get them out. They want everybody to be comfortable that this is well thought out. Just because I come up with an idea doesn't mean it's, it carries the day necessarily.
No.
I might have some good ideas, you guys are gonna have some good ideas, the idea is to get the best of all those ideas
Yeah.
onto the plan.
I went to a machine shop last week and, you know, little children's gate, there's two pit bulls behind it, and I'm thinking, boy, really need better gate than that for two pit bulls, well, I'm thinking the fence at least should be six feet, not four.
The thing is, for a serious dog, six feet isn't gonna slow them down either, you know, it has to be kind of a suggestion.
No, no, but I'm saying, if we, if we're formulating new plans, a dog park maybe needs seven feet, I don't know what you, what you're considering.
Certainly some of the. Well, there are, there are laws for the heights of fences. Do you know that?
Well, they were after swimming pools, I know.
Swimming pools, I know, like one in, yeah.
You cannot have a fence that exceeds a certain height, cause then it's considered a spike fence.
I think that's eight feet.
Eight feet?
But that's on a property line, wouldn't it?
Well, maybe we can do some. Foot fence, period.
Maybe we could do some research and find out from.
But eight foot, still, that's a high, you know, I just wanted, six foot, eight foot, that's high.
I guess I would be concerned about making the fence too high that if somebody had to get out in a hurry and felt threatened, that they couldn't physically get themselves over the fence.
That's good research to, to look into that, think of, think about that through. Then put a door, put a gate in it.
Yeah.
That closes.
Dog's not gonna get over a five foot fence.
You know, for my dog.
Do you think you could do the research to get this?
Well, we'll, we'll share.
Definitely looks like something, and you know what, when those, all those, show something on the plan, Lou.
I'd like to see it.
Uh, whether you wanna show it as a floor, what, whatever you feel most comfortable with, it sounded like you wanted to show it as a four.
Check it out.
And we'll use Larry Graham's expertise, he'll examine it, he'll look at it, if there's an issue with it.
I think you could call, uh, the Planning Association, Mass Municipal, and you can get on the computer and you could ask for some zoning regulations for conditions, because I think that's what's wrong with this one bylaw, is that we never completed it. And when you do a special permit, you require it, you should have, you know, pointed things that need to be done and how often.
I think you're gonna see that this is going to have a lot of restrictions on it. When I say restrictions, bullet points that they're going to have to do, like, um, tending to the dog affluent.
God bless you.
As far as I'm concerned, yes, God bless you. As far as I'm concerned, something should be written in on mosquito control in conjunction with the Board of Health, especially with the death that we had in town on the triple E.
Right.
You know, that's just nasty stuff, you know, one horse, one human.
Thank you, pardon? That, that guy lived over by your.
Yeah, right up by my house. And that is a breeding farm for it. You know, it's beautiful, when we were there, we saw, uh, uh, blue heron take off from the pond down at the end, God bless you again, Wendy.
Thank you.
Uh, you usually come in three, so I'll give you the third, God bless you.
That wasn't my third.
Hours of operation, you know, there's gonna be just, I think, a lot of, I won't say, condition, a lot of conditions.
Right.
You know, how are you gonna deal with, um, what are you gonna have, portable johns there?
Uh, right now, there's, there's no provisions for, for bathroom facilities, when we first envisioned the project, uh, we thought about maybe a, a compost toilet, like, um, similar to like they have at Salisbury Beach, like at the state reservation, that kind of idea, but, um, unfortunately, the budget just isn't there, I, I think the Park and Rec's hope is that we'll build some facilities, people will start using them, and the interest will spur the idea of adding amenities to them that, that would be important. Now, obviously, if you suddenly want bathrooms down there, and it's a septic system, it's a whole bunch of permitting that goes with it, my hope is that.
It's a septic system, I said, you're gonna have to deal with it, cause you're gonna have people there. Well, whether you like it or not, Lou, you know, what are you gonna have them going out and?
What do you do at West Street, Jimmy?
Going up.
Porta potty, and going out in the woods?
When you have a ballgame, you're gonna have thirty kids. They're all gonna be.
Porta potty, right, the porta potty. Basically, how you do it?
Has.
There's a company Northand over, Cleve- Clevis.
That's what I've dealt with before, yeah.
I'm not too sure they wouldn't donate one or two.
They won't donate the structure.
Or the advertising.
Yeah, they won't donate the structure, they, but, but I have, I have spoken with them in the past and they're interested in the project, but, um, but we would be looking at some ADA accessible, you know, uh, stick built building for, for bathroom facilities, I mean, you know, you're probably talking, probably add another hundred thousand dollars to the project, and again.
To build an ADA compliant bathroom?
To build an ADA compliant bathroom, uh.
Well, maybe porta potty is the first step and then.
Yeah, I've, I've seen, I've seen numerous.
Sinks, lighting, I mean.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a good challenge, right?
Yeah. Maybe a hundred thousand is pushing it, but, I mean, I think if you're gonna do something.
Hundred thousand is pushing it big time.
Yeah.
Not to jump off of that, but does everybody, is everyone, um.
I built a pumping station in Northand over the same dimensions, the box was a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, but pumping stations are built to bomb shelter specs.
I'm just talking about the stick built building. I'm just talking about the stick built building.
Can we focus on the circle?
Yes.
Is everybody happy that that's a circle, does it, should it be a T turnaround, should it be that would provide more parking? Should, is, does anybody wanna see the configuration change, is everybody happy with that? And Lou, what is that, a curb, am I seeing a curb there?
Uh this is uh, it's actually a dimension line.
No, 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 I mean on the upper part, uh between one and what is it, like one and three?
The crown or the smile, depending on where you look.
There you go, there you go, that, yeah.
Uh it's a, it's a.
What is that?
Yeah, it's a timber guardrail.
Uh huh, okay.
What's the radius?
And that's a timber guardrail?
That's what the intention would be.
How do, how do the vehicles get beyond that, I'm sorry?
Very fast and very loud.
How how do I park my car?
Uh the idea, the idea is you you. The idea is you you would drive in.
Okay.
There's a turnaround here.
Uh huh.
To leave.
Gotcha.
If you were driving in, you'd drive in and on, you know, and.
Oh, okay.
Hit behind it, there's room to go in, move in, move out, drive back around and leave. The geometry may not be perfect, I mean, I'm su- I'm sure that Larry will point out some things that um. You know, like to change it, again.
Why do we need the guardrail?
These are lines.
Yeah, maybe uh, may- maybe maybe the the guardrail wouldn't be necessary, does does anyone feel as though it's a.
It it concern mine is that it creates an eddy where s- two cars would think it's safe enough to park.
Hmm, yeah, they might think it's additional.
And and not.
They park up next to the guardrail.
Yeah, and get out one side, it's safe, nobody's gonna, there's no foot traffic.
Think a paint would do the same effect, let people know that that's.
There you go.
A line, a line in the ground.
Strip of paint on the ground.
Does anybody have a problem with?
It's all, it's all gravel, it's no. It's all gravel and it's all gravel.
Anybody have a problem with eliminating that, or do you think that there'd be a safety?
Let me do, let me just say this, the.
Obviously, you added it for a reason, please.
One one of the, one of the things here is is that. There are gonna be folks who are gonna drive down, see that all the spots are taken and immediately want to leave.
Swing back around.
So they're gonna be doing the same thing anyways. What I'm trying to do is to provide a shield between those people who are. Entering and exiting and using the parking from those people that are deciding to do a simply turnaround. Now, we can talk about a different way to delineate those two areas, again, it's limited budget, natural setting, gravel road. So I wasn't thinking about a whole lot more than some kind of a simple barrier. And again, a a section of wood guardrail was the idea, again, you know, a lot of reflectors, some signage, it's that, you know. Some kind of signage that indicates, you know, how you're gonna turn around, you know, turn around ahead, something, I mean. You're gonna have to be a little bit creative here, it's not paved, there's no striping on the road like we've all become accustomed to. You know what happens when you first, it's happened at Tenny Street, before they painted the lines after they reconfigured the intersection. Nobody had a clue how to do what, what place to be in, where, until the lines, I know because I, my my street is off of that street. Until we put the lines down, once the lines get down, everybody suddenly started figuring out, okay, I'm supposed to be here, not here.
They just need to know what's the idea here, and I think that's what's.
Right, exactly, and here it's lim- your your ability to do that is limited because it's not paved. So signage and some common sense things really are what's needed, and again, to.
So people are generally gonna drive in.
Common sense things with people driving cars?
Big open rectangle.
Those are which common sense cars?
Common sense?
Sorry.
They're gonna drive into a big open rectangle.
Mm-hmm.
And at the end of that rectangle will be HP parking and some parking. And beyond that will be the uh the dog park. And they'll have to figure out how to turn around and go the other way.
Are are you concerned that there's gonna be a lot of foot traffic up there and you're trying to protect?
Actually, you know something, as I'm loo- as I'm looking at this and now that we've got this thing changed around a little bit, there's one thing I wanna do there.
How do we make it better, Lou?
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Of course you may.
Might be able to take out the guardrail and put a round section in the middle, let them know it's a turnaround.
I was thinking.
So basically, you put a sl- small circle, you build it up and then you shorten the width of it, then they'll realize, oh, that's a roundabout, I guess, is what they thought.
I've gotta go this way, there's no other way for me to go except around this object.
Yeah, fill a hole in one, put a flagpole in the middle, stick it right in the middle.
You could just put a couple of rocks there, I mean.
But yeah, I mean, you could, there are any.
It'll be a lot cheaper than buying a guardrail.
You could put a monument to the planning board, right there.
Oh, yes.
Granite.
You're talking, so you you're thinking you wanna see something in the way of a of a central, center designation, something that indicate that it's something to go around.
Well, where where's the sign gonna be for the dog park?
On the fence.
With all the rules and regs, on the fence?
On the fence.
Near the gate. With all fence?
How many dogs do you like to lead?
Rules and, yeah, the us- the rules is usually right next to the gate when you first walk in.
So is the HP parking sign?
Behind the wood guardrail. Or or on the wood guardrail, yeah, it's gotta be above.
They only have to be the, in a gravel lot, the HP sign has to be in the ground. I think it's what, forty-eight inches of up to the bottom of the sign?
Something like that.
Okay. But that can be just a wooden post with the standard handicap. Sign on it.
Sign on the backside says no left turn, cause you're trying to promote them to go this way, you know? So what you're saying is you 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 do wanna see something in the in the middle there.
That's a good idea.
I think maybe you could have something in the middle there and eliminate the uh, put a big rock in the middle.
The only thing, it may hinder an emergency vehicle, like a fire truck on a, that's the only thing it may.
You're gonna find a boulder there big enough, one rock, big enough to roll in there and that will be uh.
Fire, fire department will tell you how big you can.
Oh, I know, I'm saying, I'm saying, it might just limit a a fire truck, hopefully not an emergency vehicle, but I meant saying of of, that's all.
The diameter of that circle, Lou, roughly.
I asked that question, you avoided the answer.
What are we, inch and twenty? Two forty?
Oh, excuse me.
Uh I show. The radius or diameter, diameter I show as a hundred feet.
Diameter is a hundred feet?
Yes, so fifty foot radius.
I think it'll be all right.
I I like the fact that you broadened the neck getting into, I think, that makes good sense.
We want the guardrail, we don't want the guardrail. Speak up now.
We could go.
Keep it, make it go away.
Use the money somewhere else.
Make it go away.
Take the money you would've spent on that guardrail curve and just move it over to the handicap spot, that way you're not adding any material.
Make it go away. Guardrail's gone. Please.
You wanna take this out?
Gone, yeah.
Okay.
Save the money, put it somewhere else.
I mean, yeah, actually.
E- especially if if you're giving drivers a very clear indication of where the flow is.
If it becomes a problem, we just put three rocks there, that people, people can walk between them as a safety factor.
There you go. Barrel, you can put those rubbish barrels there if they have to.
One question I have is is.
With a rope.
What's to. What's to inhibit folks? From creating their own little second section of parking? You know, you know.
Tow trucks?
So.
Well, that's a good point.
Here you have. These are eighteen foot spaces, so you need another twenty-two feet. So you to. Say to about here. So, I mean, you've you've got an area where where folks could just start lining their cars up again.
And I I would say.
No parks, shrink it, shrink it.
Parking only in designated areas. I just don't see there's gonna be that much conflict between someone trying to back out of the space, there's gonna be a lot of traffic going around. But that traffic will stop for someone backing up.
Yeah, I think what what'll stop it, Lou, will be that monument that you have in the middle, whatever that middle circle is.
Okay.
They're gonna look at it and say, oh, I can't do this, they're gonna have to go around me.
What a tree there.
And I mean, one one thing, you know.
Those are foam poles, you know.
Down down at the North Street Fields, people are very creative. And sometimes they park the way they're supposed to park, and sometimes they don't park the way they're supposed to park, and life goes on.
Yeah, it does work out.
Frankly, I mean, there's no, it's on dirt, on gravel, you really are limited in how much, you know.
Having that, having that guardrail, though, it's not a bad idea because dogs.
Can't, you can't fix stupid.
No, no, you can't.
They tend not to just walk into the car, they tend to walk past the car. And the guardrail provides some sort of a.
Oh, they're on a leash there, though. They're not inside the the fence.
Okay. Guardrails stay in a gun or shortened.
I like the guardrail.
Why do we need to deal with that now?
Do you like the guardrail?
I do. Oh, wait, wait, I. Not this one.
Getting late, isn't it?
Not this one, I love this one. I think the guardrail horse is almost dead.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe we should be, maybe we should be uh specific, we're we're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking, you, thi- this is one that.
That's being eliminated?
Seems to serve less of a purpose now.
So we're eliminating that one.
This one here is uh, I think it's a good idea.
Putting it there.
It would save your fence.
To save the fences, right.
Yeah, and you can put lines on it to indicate.
There you go.
Out from here is where you're stopping.
Go with that, Lou? Understand what we're saying?
Um.
Hope you do, cause we don't.
You've got enough signs in the area to keep keep people from parking behind, you put parking in designated areas only. But somebody's gonna have to have the fortitude that if they start doing that, that the people have to be told, you can't do that. Park the lights down below.
Okay. Other sheets, other questions? That'll make following a lot easier, like you said.
Does anybody see anything else? Bob, any other uh, anything else on any other plan?
I think a tree would be nice in that circle.
The tree won't survive.
No, why not?
Because all the cars turning around there will compact the roots and it's just gonna kill it. People back into it.
Of course, if there's a big tree or clump of trees there now.
Yeah.
We could not cut them down.
Yeah, maybe you could be a little careful.
Try.
Sure.
See what you can do.
And and I would assume that once you're out there with equipment, there's gonna be two feet here and two feet there, I mean, it. How much flexibility do you th- is ru- realistic? Having been out there.
How bad your surveyor is.
Well, that's that's really what I'm saying, I mean, if if we approve Plan X, right? And the surveyor goes out there and says, hmm, we've got a ledger, we've got something, some.
You mean like putting utilities under bounds and stuff? That never happens.
I, you you're, Bob, constricted with that because of where the wetlands are. You 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 couldn't shift it this way or that way, you might be able to shift it or rotate it closer to the ball field. That's that's what I'm talking about. You're tucked in a corner over there. Yeah, a- absolutely, no, that, but that's what I'm talking about, those kinds of minor adjustments.
Where we walked the property, we're just. Ballpark of where that was when we walked the pro- where this, where we had that one, we walked the property.
When when we walked, yeah, when when we walked by the pond, um, we got to the point where we started to walk in.
That's the area where you guys walked up and.
Yeah, we started to walk in.
Did you boom?
That was, that was towards home plate, so that was, that was like up here, yeah.
Kind of find the.
So it's, I think it's really hard to envision without going back there, how much work they're gonna have to do to do it. And that's why, that's why I'm suggesting, you know, if this needs to rotate around there. What impact would that have on the town decision?
A lot of what we've got going on here is based upon the the orientation and how close it is, is based upon. What we were able to obtain from Concom as far as their blessing. So, anything that we're gonna do here, if 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 I'm respecting the wishes and the directive that I got from Concom. But I'm, what I'm not doing is moving this any closer to a wetland.
Right.
So, and then the other part of this is just how how close is this to the ball field, you know, this.
You do understand that you only have. An unwritten wish list of Concom. That depending on who's on the Conservation Committee. All of this work could be forgotten.
That has been pointed out to me a number of times. I'm going.
When are you gonna get the hint?
I'm going on the.
Louis, if you say I'm going on the assumption.
No, I'm, no, I'm 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 going on the word of the people on the board. That said that they were comfortable with what we had and where we had it, and as long as we don't move it, add anything more, I'm sorry.
Do you have an open hearing? You have an open hearing?
We do, we do. And and when we make a set of revisions, they will get a set of revisions and we'll make sure that we're still on board, or they're still on board with what we're doing.
Okay, cause that's a, you know, like any board, and that's an appointed board. Yeah, that can change, that makeup can change in a heartbeat. As opposed to this, this, the makeup on this board changes once a year. Um. Ken.
Bob, any any further guidance for Lou?
No. No.
Chris, anything else?
No, we don't have enough time.
I'm ready to continue with.
Okay, so it sounds to me, Lou, like uh what the board would like to see is everything we dealt with at the last hearing, this tonight. Draw it on up, get it on back to us. You'll end up with a set of plans that you can send to the Concom. That's a lot of plans that you can give to us that we can then in turn send to Larry Graham.
Sure. And you can add those missing layers that you said were.
Yes, there are.
I had asked at a prior meeting if it was possible to have a sheet that shows where the abutters are. Hmm. In the overall scheme of things here. Lou, you don't have to get up, you you don't have a sheet, it doesn't show it.
I want, what I wanna, what I wanna see is, is there a way to expand the viewpoint?
That's all it needs to be done.
Zoom out.
Well, here's the thing. When I took this job on, the survey that was provided to me was the extent of what you s- what what's shown here.
Yeah.
So the only thing that I'd reasonably be able to do is to try to sketch together something adjacent to that. And and all it would be would be the assessor's map showing the parcels, there's not gonna be any contour information on there. There there's not gonna be a whole lot of usable information on there. And I think what what may be more of value would be to look at aerial photography.
They, I like that.
You can aerial, that you can delineate.
Oh, God, don't we can take my last map back because.
No.
That shows.
No.
Aerialy what's going on.
With the last.
Generate something easily for you off of my map.
Locus.
Yeah.
And and plot at that size.
Okay.
Use Harry's map.
But the nice thing about it, one would be very, very helpful, I think, for any abutters that are concerned, would be if you could do the overlay. Of your pre- uh, I forget what number it is, I think it's three something, that actually shows the roadway, shows the the ball field, shows the park. Shows the parking. And the outline of that overlaid on top of the ortho.
I can get Lou a.
That has the parcels. You can get him the parcel.
I can get him an image with the assessor's thing.
The assessor with all the bottom lines.
And he can slide that underneath in that viewport and he'll have it done.
Can I ask one, one further thing? Can you, can you, can we show where that water is?
You'll see it.
The pond. I just wanna make sure that that, that will be there.
It's gonna be a picture like an ortho.
Is there something we wanted him to do on the-
And he's got the survey, so that'll help with him lining up the accuracy, so there isn't distortion between the image and the-
Made no decisions.
The, the, the line.
You know, one of the things I, I just love about this project is that it's ball fields and, and wildlife.
Yeah.
And trails and-
You just go-
And we, and-
Multiple use.
We delineate, we did make some concessions on delineation, but we didn't fill in any wetlands. There's no, this was all cut, all put into a spot that we didn't really say we're gonna fill in this wetland or we're gonna reclaim this section.
I thought there was a nice little land subject to flooding.
There, there's one very-
I'm sorry, about the size of this hole.
Yeah, there's one very, very small.
That small piece on, piece on the left.
We're replicating it two at a time.
Yeah.
That's true. Yeah, the park, I'm sorry, that, that's about the size.
Very small.
Yeah.
And ultimately, when you remember, the thing about a baseball field is you can't, it's flat, it's got good soils to move around as far as- and there's no, there's no ledge, there's no, no rocks. It's very hard when you, you can, you can take a square parking area and say, okay, we can't make it square, we'll make a triangle, we'll make a rectangle. Can't do that with a baseball field. You gotta drop it in as-
You're kinda locked into the sh, the geometry.
You obviously never paid, played baseball in Dorchester or something.
Or Georgetown, because I mean, the big thing about the American Legion, they wanna put a pony field there, but we can't because we'd run into the swamp. So this will be the pony field that the town doesn't have, so.
Is there anything else we can guide Lou with? Anything else you wanna see on the plans?
I just would like to see when he comes back that it's ready for Larry.
It will be.
I think it's, I think that's pretty much everybody's goal at this point. I think we know that it's gonna be. It's gonna be as, as good as we can hone it and then Larry can take it from there. Lou, give me a, give me a reasonable time period that doesn't stress you out to make these changes.
And doesn't include the day, Chris?
Yeah, it does, definitely doesn't include the day.
What is the meeting beyond, what, what's the meeting beyond the one?
Let's put it this way, we just did it January ninth, so.
It's January ninth.
Not gonna do two hearings then, I'm like-
No, no.
Is January ninth your next meeting?
January ninth is-
December twelfth.
Jan, uh, no.
December twelfth.
December twelfth. You couldn't possibly have this by December twelfth, could you?
Well, and then Larry needs to review it.
Well, we'd be sending it to Larry at that point, right?
Well, he can send, he's sent-
Do you wanna, do you wanna send it to Larry as soon as, is that what the board wants to do? As soon as Lou gets these and gets a print up, he sends it to Larry Graham?
I think I shot a looking at it first.
You wanna shot a reading for us? Tilly, you wanna see it first?
No.
Who, you?
You don't?
I don't really care.
Nope? Bob, you don't care? Sounds like it's going to Larry. The minute you get it off the press, it goes to Howard, it goes to Larry.
Larry's gonna pick things up.
Yep. Start that review as soon as possible. So it sounded like you're gonna need how much time to create them, Lou? And I'm not putting you on the spot, but-
It, it's, it's some-
Christmas time, you gotta life.
It's somewhere between the twelfth and, I mean, you've asked for a few different things here, none of which are deal breakers, but-
No, but they do affect other, other pages.
But if I'm getting them correct, the, the twelfth is not a realistic time.
Twenty-six doesn't work for me.
Well, again, it's, what you're saying right now is, is that these are not necessarily coming in for you to flip the sheets again at your next meeting.
No, what we're looking for, I believe what we're looking for is adequate time for you to create the drawings.
Yeah.
Send them to Larry. Get us a copy and us have Larry's comments back.
So then it's not- Week before that, the next planning board meeting.
So it's not just, it's not just my timeframe, it's also Larry's timeframe built in. So that sounds like the next meeting in January.
The second meeting in January.
Which is the ninth, so he would need to have them by the second.
I don't think we're gonna do the ninth, right?
No, we already have a, a different, another hearing.
We have another hearing, yeah, twenty-third.
Unless you went away for the Concom.
It sounds-
We've got an open hearing with them.
Do it after that.
January twenty-third.
When is your-
Chris makes a motion to continue to January twenty-third, twenty-third, two thousand thirteen. Is there a second?
Aye.
Second by Mr. Watts. Mr. Watts, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. See you on the twenty-third of January, folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Okay. Something that we did not deal with was Harmony Lane bounds. Harmony Lane? Wanna give us an update on that, Howard, please? Very brief one, very quick. Back to the overhead.
But back, but this has been slightly updated since, the, the, these square bounds are in. These triangles are in. Larry Graham, uh, no, Dave Varga went out and took a look at those-
The two circle ones?
The, the circle ones.
They're there.
And in your supplemental packet is his field report.
Hate supplemental packet.
Does that mean they're in or not?
I don't know. What, what does it say? Oh, Howard, summarize, please.
Well, he, he said he written in there, it doesn't look like it though. Stockpiles to rear lot one do not seem to extend into recreation lot. I know that was a concern.
The stockpile-
Septic system stockpile, not a recreational lot.
Access to septic system cuts across corner of drainage easement area from the recreation lot driveway. What the heck is he talking about? Does this come with like English translation?
The septic system is in the recreation lot?
The septic system cuts across the corner of the drainage easement from-
Access to the septic system, he must mean, um, in, in lot one.
So he has the recreation lot ripped up right now?
The drainage easement, which is this location down here.
He, so, so-
He told him that-
There's nothing about bounds in here.
The area of the, sorry.
There's nothing about bounds in this report.
Yeah, there's nothing about, but, yeah.
So I would suggest we have him come back on the December twelfth.
I would suggest we are actually start considering, looking at some other engineers, personally. Anyway, no way to find this out, so we'll continue this out till next, till we can get a translation of this. No progress on the bounds. Engineer not responsive.
I'll have to see if there's something in the email. It'll be here on the-
Yeah, could you, could you ask him to join us at the next meeting, please, Howard? Maybe if, maybe if he's here, we'll be able to figure out what's going on.
I think if it's, if it's clear to him that-
We wanna know if the bounds are in?
Yeah, I mean, let's just put that to him.
Pretty clear, yeah, but-
Could we send him an email, short and sweet, our, uh, bounds, the rear property bounds?
She's like, you could've sworn that was already done.
I believe I saw a CC from that, from Howard.
Did you already send that?
Right.
Yeah.
And that, that's what triggered his-
And this is the response?
And that's the report we get.
This looks like the response to something else. I mean, it really, um-
He wasn't focusing on it.
Yeah.
Focusing on the stockpile. And the stockpiles were mentioned.
So, well, he'll, he'll be back on the twelfth. If, if I go back and look at an email that has the answer, I'll forward it on.
You want any good engineering? Okay, that'll be the next time.
Can I make a comment about that parcel?
Sure, it's good because the parcel would-
Park and rec parcel adjacent to, we, we had some concerns that, that's gonna be the future park site, where there's a request gonna go into name the park, you know? It's gonna be the future site of a park, because we, some members at the park are concerned that if we don't put a sign that labeling that as a, as a, as a Georgetown park, that the abutters, you know, buying that property's gonna be notified that that is a park.
There's a lot of right in the world to put your signage up.
So, so I'm saying again?
This is one of the reasons that we wanna ensure that these bounds are in.
Right, so we, we, I'm just saying to you, I, I, I don't wanna break any rules, that we're, our plans are to put a small sign that says, to label it.
I can tell you that every time the chairman and I drive by there, we pull in to check it to make sure that nobody's messing with it.
Yeah. So, but, so we are going to have a, I just have information-
It's very difficult to, to figure out what's what though in there.
Yeah, well, remember, there's gonna be, we'll be in front of you again probably in a year or two, when the rail trail gets cleaned up, to put something more established there than what is there now. But we do want the abutter of that property to know that this is, this is gonna be a parking lot to a park and when you buy the property, if you don't see the sign, you know, that, that's our intention, it's nothing major, probably just a-
Yeah, it's not neighborhood overflow parking.
No, and that's right. It's not neighborhood overflow parking. We wanna establish that as well, so.
It's very important to have bounds. That's all part of it.
So I just wanted to give you a little update of where, where heading and from our direction, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay. We have some M accounts to take care of, Howard? If it only, we need three of them, right? Motion to release. Three M accounts. Number two, six, four, seven, two.
Well, I'd like to discuss the last one.
Okay, so what about the first, the first two?
Railroad Avenue, two, six, four, seven, two.
Right.
An amount of twenty-two cents.
Two, six, four, five, nine Whispering Pines.
That's in the amount of ninety-one cents.
Yeah. Uh, is there a motion to release those funds?
Yeah.
Mister, Mister Rich? And is there a second?
My heart is sickened.
No, Tim beat ya, Tim seconded. Um, any questions about releasing that whole dollar and a half total or whatever it is?
No, but, you know, I had a question on the grant thing. Did you look at these perps?
Oh, all I know is there's ninety-two cents left in one and about thirty cents left in the other.
I know.
Do we wanna release it?
It's not gonna be like we already had. Why are we getting this again? It's my question. Why are we getting this? It's just-
Why are we-
Probably interest that was on that money.
Yeah.
But you got interest for twenty-six cents? You got, you know, where is this thing?
Point oh one percent.
Wh, which one are you referring to, Tilly? I'm sorry.
I'm trying to find it myself.
I think that's, that's-
You're, you're getting what again?
Yeah, yeah.
You're getting what again, the, the, the M report?
The M account, but not the additional money.
Right.
That's, if we take about Richardson Lane-
No, no, we're, we're only talking about releasing Railroad Ave and Whispering Pines. Some total of a dollar or something here.
Grab that mic.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. You have something to sign, Howard?
Bada boom, bada bing. Uh, James Bussing came into the planning office requesting release of the remaining funds for Richardson Lane.
Didn't we accept that last year?
Richardson Lane is just, is a town-accepted street. There were two accounts associated with Richardson Lane. One was the M account or the review account. And what I have here is the M account having to do with what he stated was the, um, bond to be held for one year after, uh, the street acceptance, so.
When did we accept that, huh? What was the date of the fund meeting? That May of two thousand one, what are we referring to?
Twenty-two cents. It went in and out, so they already sent this out. And then it come back. Is the address gonna be wrong? We're gonna get this again, is my fear. You're gonna be working on this forever.
No, you're not.
Where's it going?
Twenty-two cents, it's not sent out. It's less than five dollars. It goes into the general fund.
Yeah, it'll be all right.
So you're not gonna do a, you're not gonna do a check? It's just going in the general fund?
Richardson Lane was, uh, accepted.
voted at the town meeting?
Uh, yeah, in spring town meeting, or annual town meeting, twenty-eleven.
May twenty-eleven.
You'll come to your house.
So, May twenty-twelve would have been a full year.
They-
And we're, we're, what, nineteen, nineteen months out of a year and a half?
Nineteen months.
So nineteen months passed. Okay. And i- is there, is there some issue?
He was just asking for it. He hadn't come earlier for it, so.
Oh. Well, Matty probably would want it. Should have.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, we're gonna, I'm gonna take that as a motion by Chris to release the M account. Number two, six, four, nine, six, Richardson Lane. And is there a second for that?
Second.
Mister, ah, no, no, Bob beat you to, I'm sorry, Tim, Bob beat you. Bob, Bob seconds, yeah, just get the, the hand motion down. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Unanimously.
We want under that also.
Yeah, this one?
Yeah.
So you, you added the interest, is that what you did to, for October?
Yeah.
The number, okay, the number here is less, that's all I-
Yeah. I did, I just didn't ask them for an update in Muni. I just asked for the, what the interest will be the end of November.
It's not a hundred percent necessary, but you may wanna sign that. And what are we looking at? Is that one all finished up?
It needs Matilda's signature.
Tilly's, Tilly's the only one missing on that one. Three signatures, you may wish to sign on that one, Tilly. Done. MVPC, letters of technical assistant requests.
I'll let you say it.
Wanna give us a brief on that one?
Uh, I, I contacted Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, that's responsible for updating our ARC GIS database, and asked them to, um, make some zoning revisions, uh, revisions to the zoning map. As well as the water resource, uh, map. And-
For being good? Not great.
I'm looking to get this up on the big screen. The Jumbotron.
Get that fucking jumbo.
So, uh, this image shows, um, one of the changes. This is, uh-
So when we found it was wrong?
Yeah, this is map eleven A lot one seven nine. This is the property, uh, between Jackson Way and Milton Way. Uh, well, Jackson Way is right there is the, uh, oil company. And then the, uh, so that's been changed to RA, cause there was no proof found that town meeting ever approved the change from RA to CA.
It was CA by accident. That was a mistake in the zoning.
Correct.
Okay. And this was a change that was made at town meeting?
But never reflected on the map.
Yeah, but just somehow it was missed on the map. This IB.
And then the, the other one that's been done is, uh, these two areas up here are Byfield well protection areas. And they show similar to, you'll see what our wellhead protection area is in Georgetown. It's courtesy between bordering municipalities to show the wellhead areas.
What town is that, Byfield?
That's Byfield, Newbury Byfield.
What's that?
It's not the people that are hoarding our stock.
That's Raleigh.
Oh, wow.
That's Raleigh, right?
Right, right.
Jim DeMato knows all about that. I just figured, he said it's a, it's a, it's a cur, matter of courtesy.
I haven't heard any more. Is there an update on that story?
Yeah, we're going to-
Should ask Jim.
Yeah.
We're going waterski.
I never thought of it.
It, it's just a matter of courtesy that's-
They're sharing it fifty-fifty. We get it during the winter, they get it this summer.
Now, the, any other changes? The, um, Georgetown is allotted thirty-two hours annually for LTA assistance, or these type of changes can be made for free. Uh, this took, uh, three hours and provided in the packet was another LTA requested by a planning board member. And, um, that, I've gotten a quote for, for two hours, and so we'll have, um-
Total of five hours?
Total of five hours.
Five out of the thirty-two?
It was requested that our GIS data set include, priority habitat for rare species, estimated habitats of rare wildlife, both as defined in the state's data set layer. So, if the planning board is understanding that, I can proceed. I am the commissioner from the town of Georgetown to Merrimack Valley Planning, so I would sign off on these.
I'll take a motion, I'll, I'll accept a motion to authorize five hours of LTA hour, of LTA time from Merrimack Valley Planning Commission. Is there a second?
Second.
Chris made the motion, seconded by Tim. In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
And I can do the rest in four minutes or less, so you can finish by ten. I included in the packet, um- I included in the packet, um, information from the planning commission about the upcoming citizen planner training program.
Can we go to the use schedule?
Yeah.
Use schedule modification? What's that, Howard?
These are, uh, early concepts on changes, uh, the planning board can make at the next town meeting. And these are outcomes of review of current, uh, bylaws and zoning.
Specifically, I'm, I'm.
I'm trying to get it up on the screen. What's that?
Are we changing the use schedule?
Um, well, there's.
This, this is a, this is a byproduct of some, uh, some of the things we, we came up with, Tilly, that you noted, and looking at the, looking at the current zoning, the way it is, and some, there are certain things in the current zoning that are so antiquated, you, uh, it makes you shake your head, and, uh, some of them are what's called other uses, and Howard can explain on that one, now that he's found it.
Well, a simple way of, of looking at it is, on the use schedule, there's a category for commercial, residential, business, then there's other uses. And how do you show on a zoning map an other use zone? You don't, so the idea is to move these into the appropriate acceptable areas. There's one for senior housing, that can be moved into residential, there's another for, I believe it's storage, that can be moved into business, or something like that. So you remove that, there's another one for tower antennas, I believe, so.
It's all about cleaning up the.
Cleaning it up.
Some of the scheduling use.
User-friendly.
Yeah, make it.
And the other effort we're undertaking, and have started some research, is looking to energy generation bylaws, considering solar and wind. If we can get some bylaws on the book, either as a write or by special permit. There's the beginning of the process of getting Georgetown, uh, designated as a green community, which opened up, uh, another whole venue for different grants, and so forth. It ties into with mass housing, not mass housing, mass development, offering up, uh, will, uh, interest rate loans to businesses to develop alternative energy generation on their buildings and so forth, so. It starts tying in, weaving into other aspects of economic growth.
Probably gonna have to deal with marijuana dispensary zoning soon, too.
I don't think so.
Well, somebody wants to, somebody, Steve Epstein, if he wants to.
Jewish street.
Start one up. Yeah, one for Jewish.
Down in West Street. We don't, we don't control CVS, we don't control Georgetown Pharmacy in any way, it's a medical, it's a medical pharmacy, pharmaceutical. I would think that the more pressing thing would be a, a grow and sell facility, which would get an agricultural exemption.
Looks like farms can be anywhere in the whole state.
There's a farm behind me.
Just quickly, that's
Wonder which way the wind's going.
The category up there.
Hope they don't have a fire.
On the screen.
Yes, this is the, this is what you were talking about?
Yeah.
Other uses?
The other thing I want to draw attention to is that two of those uses are not defined.
Have no definitions, yeah.
In the bylaws, and, and so, uh, definitions ought to be reached for those. The other element that I'd also like to have the board consider is the fact that, in definitions, notice my segue. Uh, planned unit development is no longer defined in the bylaws, so that definition should be removed and replaced with what replaced the PUD, and that's open space residential development. So that's just.
There is no current definition for open space residential development?
Not in the, the definition section.
Not in the definitions?
Right.
Good, good find, Howard.
Nice catch.
Nice catch.
In the beginning, there's an outline of.
We found that in the, in our meeting, remember?
Oh, give him a little credit. We beat him up enough.
You do.
Okay.
He beat you up, not me.
So those are the three zoning bylaws that are being investigated for Springtown meeting. Speaking of Springtown meeting, um.
Another great segue.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Um, in your meeting supplement, I just included two draft letters of what, um, would be sent out to a butters on Abbey and Cedar Lane. Just to inform them that the selectmen would be considering, uh, the laying out of those two roads, the selectmen need to formally lay them out before they go to the town meeting. Now, the planning board has not done a report to the selectmen. So, uh, I can make a report to the board right now.
Yeah, but does that report have to go in a defined period of time before the meeting? And we have to hold?
The planning board report to the selectmen should occur within forty-five days, if it doesn't, the selectmen can act on their own, or they can decide to wait for the planning board report.
Oh, okay.
So, the report to the selectmen can be made either orally or written.
Quick question about Cedar Lane. When the developer divvied it all up, created lots, did he reserve his fee in the roadway? Is the fee in the roadway reserved, or does everyone on Cedar Lane own to the center of the road?
Cedar Lane, uh, is, is reserved in fee.
It is.
However, I would say it'd be due diligence at this time to do title search, and make sure that that's perfectly clear before you go to town meeting.
Probably.
The same way with, uh, Abbey Road. I have found public way easement granting forms that have never, they haven't been recorded, so that was.
Are they originals?
They're originals, but they would be recorded at certain times, I gotta find out why they weren't recorded. And, uh, I can only assume with Cedar Lane, they're never recorded because of the lawsuit that went on.
These might end up as takings. Are you referring to Cedar?
Cedar Lane, right.
Okay, but what about Abbey?
Abbey has the same thing. Assigned board owner, but they weren't recorded, so that's why I would encourage clean title search right now. Now, would you want to wait for that to come back to the board before reporting to the selectmen? Because I, I'm confident that you can make a report to the selectmen that they should proceed in the layout of the roads. And all that does is place it on the warrant.
Right. Wouldn't the, wouldn't it best behoove the selectmen to have a report that includes that information? I would think.
It, it would be a matter of more confidence for them, but at the same time, the selectmen, really, all they need is an as-built plan, or their approved subdivision plan, showing that is separately owned.
Right.
They can proceed with just the notice that they're gonna do that.
If you don't have clean title to, why would we want to take up the selectmen's time? Why would we want to take up time at town meeting? And why would we not want to be proactive and get it done?
Money.
Right.
How much does it cost for that?
That can be the report to the selectmen. But I'm just suggesting that a report should be made to the selectmen of what's occurring right now, so they don't.
Even if you include in the report of the, to the selectmen, let them get the title, let them, on their budget, send it out to town council.
Oh, we have the planning board, I mean, the, the, I, I think we have a budget that includes things such as that.
I have a question about that.
I think we anticipated that in our budget.
If we did, then what are we waiting for?
If, if the road is not accepted, and, um, the butters each own up to the middle of the road.
If the, if the developer did not reserve the fee in the road.
Uh-huh.
Then they, then they do.
The developer still owns the road, until someone moves into the home, and, um, then they own up to the lot.
Not if they don't reserve the, their fee.
The landowners own the road.
Right, the land, that's what I'm saying.
Derelict fee statute.
I was wondering, are they taxed for that? The landowner? Own it?
They're not.
No.
Not traditionally.
Welcome to Georgetown.
Uh, I don't think it happens in any community, but.
So what, what I'd like to do is the selectmen are next, next meeting on December eleventh, is I can just draft up a one-page report on where the planning board is, and have that serve as the report back, and tell the selectmen not to take any action until the, the title is cleared up, or our report recommends that the selectmen pursue the title search.
Well, the reason, the reason why I'm asking this is that there's no incentive for a developer to get the, the ducks in a row, let's call it that, to get the town to accept the road, if there's no incentive, it's getting plowed, it's getting maintained, I think they can do five hundred dollars.
They save money, Tilly, if, if, the way it's going right now.
Absolutely.
They don't have to produce the plans for the road.
And I'm thinking, I'm, thinking to myself, if they were taxed for that land that they still own, maybe that would be enough of an incentive for them to get their paperwork done.
I think, I think we should have, I think we should have a rule that says if they don't.
We don't do that.
Who is the they, the, the owners of the lots in the subdivision?
If the developer.
Or the developer.
If the developer doesn't.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do certain things.
So I'm a developer, and I, I, I lay out a.
They don't reserve the fee in the street.
Right.
That the potential property owners own that street, it's a private street. And they're responsible for any and all bills incurred because of the street. I, for the life of me, I don't know why they're telling, Georgetown is paying to have private streets turned into public streets. And this chapter ninety argument to me is fluff.
Really?
Well, Chris, uh, gi- given that eh, anyone would have to admit that if there is a street that is occupied, and people are living on it, public safety vehicles do have to be able to get there in the middle of a snowstorm, so we're gonna have to plow it. I mean, there's a public safety aspect to that.
I don't have a problem.
If we do end up.
I don't have a problem with that, the cost of, the cost that I'm talking about is getting the title searched on.
Right.
Getting the plans made. Those are big costs.
Oh, absolutely, and.
That's the cost that I'm talking, I'm not talking about the plowing.
That's usually borne by the development. Assuming this board does its thing all the time, every time through the process. Sometimes, in, in the past, things get busy, things get dropped. It happens.
It's gonna be a checklist item.
And I can tell you this much, Cedar Lane, I know, was extensively litigated, that was the reason.
Right.
That ball got dropped.
And they were also supposed to do work on Andover Street.
Abbey Road made a petition in two thousand and two, and I haven't been able to find why it stopped. Cedar Lane residents made a petition in two thousand and three, and it stopped because of the litigation, so.
Yeah.
Um, a lot of these documents are already made.
Really?
The as-built plans.
Really?
For Abbey Road are complete.
Oh, okay.
Cedar Lane are not complete, but, uh, I've been informed that, um, if the selectmen have the choice of either accepting an as-built for the layout, or their approved subdivision plan for, for the layout, so. The other aspect is, is I can contact the, the engineer to see if the developer for Cedar Lane is now ready to proceed with completing their as-builds, which I would assume need to be done on closing out a subdivision anyhow.
Well, like I said before, Cedar Lane, there's something to do with Andover Street drainage, when Cedar Lane was built.
Is there an M account for Cedar Lane with money in it?
And that's what I.
There, there's, there's two, there's a bond and there's an M account.
How much is in the M account?
M account is, as a fifty-three G can't be used for paying for layout. We might be able to make an argument that the bond is to be used for the, the layout, 'cause what it is, is it's completing the street, in some of.
That was gonna be my argument, that doesn't complete the street.
No, well, no, but you, you generate the as-builds and making sure it's.
No, but if you.
Turned over.
Contact the developer and remind them that they have this much money waiting, and they can get it back if they spend this much money to generate as-builds.
Right.
And they generate the as-builds and we give them that money back, we might have worked it.
That's why I asked the question.
A win-win. Yeah, good point. Howard, it sounds to me like the board wants to move forward. Is everybody good on the idea of doing the title search and doing all, every, anything necessary as far as, we good with that? Tilly?
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
What, what I'd like to do is, is just notify the selectmen.
Inform them.
Don't make any action on these until the planning board resolves these things.
We, we, there, there needs to be some more information gathered, and there are steps that have to be taken before you can, they can do what they need to do.
Right.
And we're on it. And we're, we'll proceed with the idea that we'll go for those at Springtown meeting, the annual town meeting.
Right.
Uh, until we find out otherwise.
It works.
I thought I heard you say that earlier, Tim. Wow, and there's a big argument. Tim moves to adjourn, and I think Tilly seconded that one. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, you have to have it, most carries unanimously, and meeting is adjourned at ten. Wow, twelve PM, good night, everybody, and see you in a couple of weeks.
Has everybody signed the drawings that wants to sign the drawings?
Yeah.